Welcome to the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission Public Hearing Agenda for Thursday, April 15. This meeting is being held via teleconference only, consistent with the State of California executive orders related to COVID-19, where our in-person physical meetings are being suspended at this time. However, the meetings are being made available to watch on cable TV channels 27 and 99, as well as our Zoom link, which is provided on the homepage of our agenda, which is on the homepage of Planning Commission Agenda at Town Hall. You can also call in at 1-669-900-6833, and please use webinar ID 84270521962. Members of the public may provide public comment during the meeting using one of the following options. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand during public time, and we will unmute you for your turn. And if you're calling in, press *9 during the public time, comment time, raise your hand, and *6 to unmute yourself to speak. Prior to 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, members of the public may submit written comments to the Planning Commission. If comments are received after the circulation of our packet, but prior to the meeting, they'll be sent to the Planning Commission and will be part of the meeting record, but not necessarily read out loud. So we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we can do roll call, please.
Okay, Fragoso? Gonzalez? Can you hear me? Okay. Fragoso? Gonzalez Parber? Absent. Green?
Yeah.
Newton?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Chair Rodriguez?
Present. So we do have a quorum. We'll accept approval of the agenda. People could look over their agenda and make a motion to accept it, and we'll move forward on it.
Yeah, the agenda looks good. I would make a motion to approve it as is.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Does he have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Swift. Can we have a roll call?
Okay. Green?
Yeah, I.
Newton?
I.
Swift?
I.
Chair Rodriguez?
I. So the meeting, thank you. The meeting protocol, the chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and public input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of the commission member staff or the members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Now, we're going to start with public comments on non-agenda items, and so if there's anyone wishing to address the commission on matters, not on the-
Okay, super. We'll see you in a minute.
Ben, you're not on mute.
Do you think we can mute Ben, please? Thank you. But within the jurisdiction of the commission, must do so by email or in person via Zoom in the manner described above. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or otherwise established by the commission chair. Do we have anyone at this time who is interested in speaking on items not on the agenda? Please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised at this time, so we'll move on. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard, we try to limit our presentations, provide public comments via email. Please state your views succinctly, give us any alternatives to your idea, submit any new documents to the planning staff via email prior to the meeting would be very helpful for the public record. We have no consent calendar items, so we won't do anything on that. Next, we'll go to a presentation of the Fairfax Climate Action Committee. And what we've, I wanted to kind of introduce this. The Climate Action Committee is a committee of appointed folks from the town council, and they were established to implement the Climate Action Plan, which was adopted by our town council in 2014. And its mission is to mitigate the production of greenhouse gases and compile existing and potential strategies to address climate change. It addresses an annual action, action plan, as well as recommended amendments to the Climate Action Plan. They meet on the third Tuesday of each month. They've got between seven and 13 members, and that includes two council representatives and some great folks on here, Kiki Laporta and Joan Lassiter and some other really great, great folks. They've got four vacancies, so anybody who's interested in joining that group, please contact the town clerk, Michelle, can't remember her last name, but there's an application that you can submit and find out more about that, that commitment. I'm very excited to have both Jody, Jody Timms, and then Walt Vernon, who's the chair of that committee, who's going to give us an update on their 2030 Climate Action Plan. And I'll turn it over to both of you then, and thanks very much for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Well, good evening, commissioners. I chair the Climate Action Plan Update Committee of the Climate Action Committee, which you probably know was created as part of the general plan 10 years ago. And as Michelle said, our, our main responsibility is to create and implement a cap. So thank you very much for the time on your agenda tonight. I'm going to quickly go through some slides, and I'm imagining that we'll have a little bit of Q and A at the end, but we also want to, I want to be sure to mention that if you have additional thoughts and comments after tonight, if you could please send those or go to the Climate Action Committee's website, which is climafx.org. We are taking public comment until April 30. So let me start. This is the draft of our current cap with the town's very ambitious and visionary goal, really, of zero emissions by 2030. Climate science is very clear. We're all quite far behind in addressing global warming, and we definitely need to stop burning our fossil fuels. So we are fighting somewhat of an uphill battle locally and globally. A cap, as I said, has one primary goal, and that is to reduce measurable greenhouse gas emissions in order to reach our target. So next slide. We cannot do this alone, certainly neither the Climate Action Committee nor the town council nor the, nor the town. So if you want to go quickly, you go alone, but if you want to go far, you need to go together, and it's going to take all of us. Next slide. Should be one before that one, but, oh, no, I'm sorry, that might be right. Slide three, go back one, I'm sorry. There we go. So our first cap in, in 2014 set a goal of 20% reductions by 2020, and we actually hit 27% reductions in 2018, and that was after this 25% was adjusted for a slight population increase. So as you can see from the graph, most of our emissions come from transportation, which is the blue section, and then residential energy, which is the orange section. Next slide. So this is a paragraph from the town's Climate Emergency Resolution, which was passed a little more than two years ago now. We were the first city in Marin to pass an emergency resolution, and the only town so far to set this ambitious of a goal. But we aren't, not alone. San Anselmo is considering adjusting their target goal, and there are six cities in California, including Sebastopol, Santa Rosa, and Petaluma, and, and at least 13 other cities nationwide that have set the goal of zero or net zero emissions by 2030. Next slide. So how did we get here? Well, we began this process of updating that 2014 cap in August of 2019. The template for a Climate Action Plan comes in Marin from Christine O'Rourke. She is the consultant that all the cities and towns pay for, and she pays into her salary part of it, and she chairs the MSEP, which is the Marin Climate and Energy Partnership. So San Rafael took the template and just made, made changes to it for, that worked for them, as did San Anselmo. We, in Fairfax, looked at those two versions and the original template and have customized what is in the, in the Climate Action Plan for Fairfax. Next slide. So these are some of the guiding values that were centered in our work, and we did place the issue of social equity right up front. It's the first section in our cap, and it's deep, of course, deeply connected with climate change. As most of us know, communities that have contributed the least to global warming really suffer first and most from the consequences of it. We've also asked the members of our RESJ committee here in Fairfax to take a look at our Climate Action Plan and to help ensure that we center equity in all the work that we're doing. The next slide. So these are our mission, trends, forecasts, and targets. You can see the three scenarios are actual emissions. If we did nothing different, business as usual, you can see where the state goal would take us, and Fairfax's Climate Action Plan is zero in 2030. So all, our focus, and similar to really virtually all caps, is strictly local emissions, not life cycle emissions. Programs like Resilient Neighborhoods help community members address the broader emissions, which are actually four and a, more than four and a half times greater than those that we can closely measure. Next chart here. So this is a summary of the, this is literally page 47 from the cap. We have eight general categories or strategies, and there are 28 actions that are actually measurable. So Christine O'Rourke takes each of these actions. She calculates the amount of reductions we can expect based on the goal we set or the strategies we put. And then that, as you can see, totals 29,988 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent for the town of Fairfax. Next slide. So this is a summary chart of, again, the, what is in the Climate Action Plan. Seven of our eight strategies are on the right. Community outreach and engagement is obviously absolutely central to everything we're going to try to do. And then, of course, you have transportation, energy efficiency, renewable energy and electrification, waste, water, and sequestration. You can see, of course, the, the amount of greenhouse gas reductions in each of these categories, the percentages, and then what the state would contribute by 2030. And again, transportation would be 37% of our reductions, renewable energy and electrification 34%, and sequestration is 18%. That is, in large part, because in order to get to zero, should we be able to carry out everything in the plan, we would still need to purchase carbon offsets to get us to zero. So that's a large part of that 18%. Next slide. So we have started to get a fair amount of public comment back about, we presented the cap twice to the town council, as you probably know or may know, and some of the feedback that we're getting, I've basically kind of put it into these five categories. So what a cap covers, and again, I mentioned this before, just greenhouse gas reductions. It has broad strategies and actions. It's not an implementation plan. It doesn't say every step, nor that we're going to carry out, nor a fiscal analysis. It's not an adaptation plan. Some folks have asked us to address PSPS and the electric grid in California, et cetera. Those are out of the scope, really, of the cap. The goal of zero by 2030, again, as I mentioned, is set in the Climate Emergency Resolution, and this cap is what it would take to get us there in 10 years. So we are not challenging that goal in the cap that we've written for, for the community. Expensive, absolutely. We are hearing, you know, that people, this is going to cost a lot, and we completely agree electrifying transportation and buildings is going to be very costly and complex. We see our primary job as informing residents about rebates and incentives and discount purchasing and funding and advocating for those. We're going to need the kind of financial support from the state and the federal level to, to be able to carry this out. In terms of the direction of the state and the federal government, as you know, I'm sure there, there are no sales of gasoline vehicles going to be allowed in California after 2035. There are more than 40 municipal all-electric ordinances that have been passed, and we have one as well before the town council. Electrify Marin and Electrify America are programs well in process at this point or progress. And, and of course, in terms of capacity, as we all know, we're a small town, small staff, small budget. All ordinances that are referenced in the, in the cap would, of course, come before the town council, possibly the Planning Commission, for discussion and debate and public comment and eventual voting. And, you know, by and large, compliance will need to be voluntary by the community. So next slide. This is a slide basically that we borrowed from the Climate Center, which is a terrific local organization, and basically just reminds us that not taking action is going to be much more expensive than if we take the, the actions before us that are going to be costly. And the last slide, just coming back to where we started, we're going to need everybody working together. We're going to need our residents, the businesses, the staff. We're going to need all of our committees and commissions, as well as, of course, the county drawdown, the state, and the federal government to get where we need to go. So at this point, Walt is going to manage, along with you, Michelle, I suppose, whatever questions and comments that you might have for us tonight.
Thank you, Jody, and thanks, Walt, for taking the time to all the effort that you've put into this, and thank you for coming here this evening and making a presentation. I'm just wondering if any of the commissioners have any questions or comments on what you, what you've seen?
If I may, I thought that was great, actually. I thought that was, you know, a reasonable plan. It seems implementable, you know, and I think at the moment, you know, I would say staff and whoever is looking into funding, you know, this probably is a good time to seek funding for a program like this. And so I would urge that on. You know, the plan is great, but the thing that I have a question about really is the idea of, you know, voluntarily complying with these things. And so what kinds of incentives do you think that, you know, Fairfax, its size, its budget, you know, and maybe assuming some funding, you know, could actually provide to, let's say, you know, change out some of the regular light posts perhaps with, for those that can have electric charging stations and stuff like that? I mean, this is, there's some infrastructure that could be all over the place changed out, and so those are some of the questions, like what are the incentives that you think we might be able to, to, to tantalize people with?
Thanks, Phil.
Through the chair.
Well, we'll wait for Walt or Jody to respond to the point.
I think I'd rather hear another question.
I can, I'd be happy to mention one, two things. You know, we have set a few annual goals for this next year. So for instance, one of them, and of course, it has to go before the town council, actually even has to go before the CAC, but we're looking at maybe trying to put a small pool together that would offer incentives, maybe $500 or $250 for electric bikes, just as a small way, a small pool that within Fairfax, we could start to incentivize movement toward electrification. But I will mention through the Electrify Marin program here, I just completely electrified my own home, and it was a little over $30,000, and I got over $10,000 in rebates. So that's a huge chunk of money that's there. It's available, and there are more and more of those coming, especially with, we're hoping on the federal level, more and more incentives that can really help people move in this direction.
Thank you. Norma, did you want to say something?
I did. Thank you. Kind of a follow-up on what both our prior speakers have said. And one thing I've noticed is that Climate Action Committees do a wonderful job of doing the caps, and obviously, it's a focus on greenhouse gas reductions, but there seems to be a disconnect that we are seeing around the county between cap goals and objectives and a lack of policy in towns that not only incentivize, but can require electrification, for instance, or EV charging stations. And it, it seems there needs to be a better connection between those cap goals and policies and our actual building codes and requirements, particularly in terms of new construction, which is a wonderful opportunity to not leave it to be a voluntary thing when that would be the most incredibly cost-effective way to electrify structures. And then incentives for existing structures to meet those requirements. So just someplace my mind went with that.
Thank you. Go ahead, Walt.
So I'll, I'll try to answer that. You know, I, I do think it's important to know that I, I don't think we're going to get there entirely by incentives and by voluntary efforts. And your point is a good one, that aligning follow-through in terms of policy is going to be important. As you may know, the town council is considering right now an ordinance to require all-electric new construction for all building types. And so that was sort of the first step. We're looking at now sort of what would be the triggering events. So as an example, if somebody had to replace a furnace, maybe rather than replacing it with another natural gas furnace, you'd have to replace it with an electric furnace. So we're starting to look at those triggering opportunities. There are, of course, other overlapping jurisdictions, such as the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, who are looking at similar restrictions. And so it's not a, it, it, it is a difficult problem, because for us to get to zero by 2030, it effectively means every building in the town, every home, every business, will have to remove its natural gas lines or at least turn them off and fully electrify. And every car in the town will have to be replaced by an electric or a fuel cell, some sort of car. So it is going to be a daunting challenge, and it's going to take a lot to get there. And it will take, I think, as Jody said, all of us, including incentives and what I guess I would frame as nudges, I hope, from the town in terms of the policies needed to, to move us down the path.
There was something that I wanted to bring to your attention that we have actually later on in the agenda, and it has to do with the fact that we're updating our housing element. And the second to the last item that we'll hear this evening is a review of our housing goals. You kind of start with what are the goals and what are the policies, what are the programs, and then you have to do the municipal code amendment, which is the laws to implement the, the, the general plan. And I'm hoping that the committees will get looped into getting on those mailing lists. And I will say that the comments that I read in here from that subcommittee now does include greenhouse gas, a recognition of greenhouse gas emissions, the need for EV chargers, the all-electric ordinance, energy efficient housing for all. And so we are, as far as the comments on these goals, addressing your top two emission areas, which is the zero emission vehicle and then the building and appliance area. So that's one thing I think to get looped into. And then I think, I love the idea of focusing on implementation, which is the incentives. And I think, Jody, your description of how you were able to do it, I think more needs to get into our community newsletters, that there are people out there who can actually do it. How do they do it? What were the thought processes they went into? Why did they select certain things? And I think from our perspective, the lawmakers, we really know, we need to know if we're going to go all-electric, should our code then focus on, I mean, do we want to take a first wave at ovens or a first wave that, you know, what's the priorities? And, you know, we don't have to talk about it right now. I just think it's something that's going to shake out sooner than, than later. But otherwise, I appreciate that. The only thing I wish it had was the, was the energy resiliency. I'm real interested in microgrids, and I think it does actually relate to some things, but we don't have to have that conversation now. Does anybody else on the Planning Commission have any comments or questions? I'm going to go ahead and go to the public and see if they do. Does the public have any comments on the presentation from our Climate Action Committee I don't see any, but I want to say thank you so much for coming this evening and taking that time. Really appreciate your ongoing focus on some of the, the relationships between what we're doing and what you're doing, and for being here this evening, and you can count on us to support you as you go forward with your effort. Thank you.
Can we get access to the, to your slide presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Why don't we post it on our website, Jody? We can email it to them as well.
If you get it to Ben, Ben can distribute it to the Planning Commission.
Yeah, and again, and the, and the place for public comment is at climafx.org. That's our direct website for the Climate Action Committee. But well, yeah, so we can put it there, but send it to you as well.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for giving us some time.
We're going to go ahead, going to go ahead and go on to public hearing item, and this is item number two, which is the, the continued item on the discussion consideration of a draft ordinance for recommendation to the town council for adopting an amendment to town code 17020 and 17020030 to include a subsection C requiring a design review permit for exterior color changes or significant design changes to any buildings or structures on commercially zoned properties. Planner Neil?
Okay, so at the March 18, 2021 meeting, the commission reviewed a first draft of an amendment to the town code to reinstate requiring design review permits for exterior color changes and/or alterations of significant exterior design elements to structures located in all zones except single-family and duplex zones. At that meeting, the commission had a number of comments, which we addressed in our staff report, and suggestions for how to make the ordinance better, which we think we have included. There was one comment by a commissioner that she believed that a definition of significant, what a significant design element is, needs to be included. And staff's original recommendation, the one in our staff report, we, we would prefer that if the commission's concerned about not having this reference defined, could result in conflicts or confusion between the town and applicants, you could incorporate the following after the first sentence in C. "A dispute between an applicant and the director of planning and building services regarding what constitutes a significant design feature shall be referred to the Planning Commission." But we did a little research after the commissioner and I kind of had an interchange this afternoon, and I think an alternative language that you could also add instead of the suggested language in the staff report is this. "A significant design element alteration is anything that changes the shape, line, color, pattern, or texture of the exterior of a building, including changes in any exterior building materials, roofline, window or door, shape, size, or location, changes to awnings, et cetera." So anyway, we're recommending that you adopt our draft, or I mean, recommend that the council adopt our draft ordinance by adopting the resolution, and you can vote on, on which alternative for clarifying what a significant design element is, or whether you want it to be determined by the planning director or by you, if there's any kind of difference of opinion between an applicant and the planning director, after you discuss the matter.
Thank you very much. I just kind of wanted to maybe give a little bit more background for the public, and that was that we had an application for, I think it was a, a design review, it came before us or something like that, and the, it was in downtown Fairfax. It came before us or something like that. And the it was in downtown Fairfax, and the structure had a very dark um color. And there was some question about the level of authority that we had over um the structures in downtown. And we realized that with the recent with the last publication of the municipal code, some language had been dropped. But there it was more of an administrative drop versus uh a conscientious direction from either the Town Council or the Planning Commission to delete that language. And the Planning Commission wanted to initiate the process of bringing that language back. When we looked at the language as it appeared previously, it seemed somewhat antiquated in that it had referred to valuation estimates that didn't make sense to us anymore. And so this is our opportunity where the staff is coming back with a revision um to that to that language. Okay, so um I see several hands raised. And so uh Mimi had her hand up first, and then Phil, please.
Linda, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that new language a little slower for me?
Sure, I'd be glad to. So do you want me to read both of them, the two alternatives? Just the just the one I came up with?
Yeah, because I already have the other one in my packet.
So we were just um another alternative would be to include this as the second sentence in that section C. It would help define what a significant design element alteration is. So it would say, a significant design element alteration is anything that changes the shape, line, color, pattern, or texture of the exterior of a building, including changes in any exterior building materials, roofline, window or door, shape, size, or location, changes to awnings, etc. And the reason I came up with that language is I looked up what elements of design are. And elements of design are things such as line, direction, shape, size, texture, value, and color.
And Linda, where are you reading that from? Because the the area I was going to look at was seventeen oh two oh oh four oh under Design Review Criteria, Item B. So where are you?
I just went online because when I tried to look up, I didn't find anything in our code that actually defined significant design alteration. I didn't find anything about that.
Mimi, I don't I guess you were must be talking to Linda because I also had to note into Linda. Yeah, but I
No, I only got one comment about this.
Um. Okay, so I think she answered your question. Mimi, did you have any other question? Okay, uh Phil, do you have a question for staff?
Yes, I think the phraseology there for that is not bad for section C, but include something like the phrase including but not limited to. And then the list of different, you know, slope and line and pattern and all that isn't a limiting list. And then it's fine. I think that's a great solution. So sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you.
And but Linda, while we're looking at that, can you also look at seventeen oh two oh oh four oh B? And see what you think of that, because that's on our own municipal code and might be a more solid kind of connection versus. Okay, Cindy, please. Uh did you have any question?
Yeah, can you tell me where we are with this in the staff report as far as this possible language change? For a page?
It would be in the ordinance on page two, uh which is on section one under Now There For It.
So in our ordinance or the Town?
It's attachment A one to the staff report.
Right.
Page two, right at the top. I that's where I would be putting it. I I is that where you?
Linda, can you tell me where you were looking at that?
Where I was looking at the at the language I suggested?
Where it would go.
Okay, so if you look at if you look at attachment A one.
Right.
The language we're we're trying to reinsert is on page two at the top. And it would just be the second sentence under that seventeen point zero two zero point zero three zero C.
Okay, got it.
But let me read you what Michelle's referring to from the code section. So that section that she's referring to says only elements of design which have a significant relationship to exterior appearance of structures and facilities shall be considered. These elements may include height, arrangement on the site, texture, material, color, signs, landscaping, and appurtenances. I'm okay with it. I mean, I'm okay with either one. That would be consistent.
Code section again?
That's seventeen point zero two zero point zero four zero B. And that would be that would keep it consistent. So you could either say as described in section blah, 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 B, right, rather than?
With Phil's language of including but not limited to.
So we would say including but not limited to changes to elements of design which have a significant, you want to just include that sentence from B instead?
Um Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. Before we fine-tune the language on that, I actually have a slightly different suggestion.
Uh huh.
Um.
They moved.
I I don't I don't have a problem with the list of elements that Linda came up with. Those are definitely elements we'd be interested in. The Muni Code uh is simpler, uh but also kind of gets to the point. I'm wondering if we don't want to uh wait a bit and bring in the uh structural elements from our odds to be developed that talk about the texture and character of Fairfax, whether it be housing or downtown central or commercial, uh to put it more in context and something that gets ingrained in our codes the way we are planning to do with development standards and historic and character, social fabric criteria. Uh I know we're not quite ready to do that, but uh I'm not sure what the big rush is.
I say I think that we could put that additional language in here. I don't think that we should uh slow down anymore. And I think if there's anything that comes out of odds that we need to come back and modify this. Cindy?
That makes some sense for expediency.
I know we haven't, we're almost deliberating here, and we haven't gone um to public comment on this yet. Um I like what we're doing. I have um should we get that far? And and I like the language that you changed with the residential zones added added in there. Um should we get to the point of the resolutions, both from the, you know, on the Town Council and ours? Um I would have some small changes there because one of the things that um I think needs to be clarified a little bit that we can do in the language is, you know, we're focusing in this on the downtown area. But we need to be aware that we have commercial zones throughout the town. So um I would look at a couple of the paragraphs just to um make it a little bit clearer that we're not only focusing on the downtown area. Um so those are just my comments.
Thank you. Okay, so it sounds like we've got our questions answered. Is there any member? I'd like to just to go to public feedback on this public hearing item. And is there any attendees uh from the public who would like to speak on this proposed amendment to a variety of zoning districts and exterior structure? Please raise your hand. I'm not seeing any member of the public with their hand uh raised. Um I think we should go back then into Linda, I I wanted to ask you on this r- r- resolution. I know one of the issues had to do with us talking about uh, okay, now there's going to be mixed-use properties that will be structurally commercial uh and categorized under the building code as commercial. Um and I can see then in the whereas, number two, you've identified commercially zoned and multi-unit property. So that's how you've addressed it. Um in the third whereas you put there is a trend toward throughout town to build new buildings. Is that what you meant?
Oh, hang on.
Okay.
What page are you on?
I'm on attachment A, third whereas.
One, two, three. Yes. Yes.
It says um there's a trend throughout town to, is it build new buildings? Or you or you meant do improvements or?
No, I mean, we so I know we don't build that many commercial buildings, but I was maybe I shouldn't even say that. We're just getting a lot of residences that are in gray and black and white. I mean, it's it's I was trying to point out that it's a trend throughout all kinds of things happening. It's not just the downtown. So it's it's a trend that's not um that's widespread, which is why I also attached that article about the graying of San Francisco. If you go online, it's happening all over the United States in towns everywhere. So.
So maybe it's uh there is a trend throughout town to alter existing buildings utilizing exterior color palettes of black, gray, and white? Is that what you meant to do?
That sounds good.
Okay, so I'm just gonna make a, okay, so we're not there yet, but um and I see in the fifth whereas you have a variety of our districts in there. And we opened with a legal notice on this was regarding commercial buildings. And um and it was let's see, blah, 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 blah.
Language, the language is intended to apply to everything except the single-family and duplex zones.
Okay.
So it's to me, it's clearer to just say the few zones it's not applying to, and then.
Oh, except. I missed the except. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay. Um. All right. Other uh comments on this uh resolution or the direction we're going in or this ordinance, Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. I'm trying to find in the staff report, it talks about all but the uh town center, the central commercial area. It talks about highway zone with commercial properties, but then the resolution uh very clearly includes the where is that? Oh, it's the attach. Okay, wait a minute. I lost it. It's the attachment. The resolution does include the town center, the center commercial area, which I think should be included. Uh but it it wasn't in the staff report, so.
Where is that that you're referring to, where you see this uh in the resolution of the ordinance about the town center? Oh, I see. It's in the ordinance, number three, under uh whereas, number uh six?
The third whereas or?
Okay.
Is it a number? I'm sorry, where did you say?
I I see it now. It's um attachment A one. It's under the uh sixth whereas, item number three. The uh the village character, the town center, and the mixed uses of architectural orientation.
Yes.
Colors and textures. Okay, so that's good.
I agree should should be included, but none of that was referenced to in the discussion in the staff report.
I think I think the resolution is the approving document. The ordinance is the structural changes.
With that.
So as long as we've got the structural change that you want, I think it's good. Um I thought Mimi had her hand up. And then Phil, Commissioner Newton? And then Commissioner Green.
So I had a couple very minor comments on the uh ordinance language. Um and uh maybe on the the resolution for the Town Council as well as uh one of the attachments. So on the resolution uh in the first whereas clause, um there was a reference to various multifamily development. I think that should be plural developments. In the uh last whereas clause on that page in attachment A, it says ordinance six eighty-eight was meant to expand the design review ordinance. And I would put the date for six eighty-eight in there, the, you know.
Okay.
Updated in two thousand two or whatever, you know, just reference the time period in that part. Um on the ordinance itself, we've got references in the first whereas clause, the second whereas clause, and the fourth whereas clause to uh a small but colorful downtown area, the small-town feel of the commercial areas, plural. And then in the fourth one, small-town character of the downtown area. And I'm just wondering, are we saying there are like one downtown area and numerous commercial areas? Is that what we're saying?
That's not what I I wasn't pay. I wasn't focusing on it that much. I I was trying to reference what is cited in your general plan as your
And I do think that the intent of the
Town Center element, element, right?
That the intent of the whereas is is to lead the reader from through our decision-making process. So if we can figure out.
And I was trying to use language that you find in your general plan, right? So.
Well, I think you could have a downtown area and multiple commercial areas. So maybe we don't need to change it. I just wanted us to be conscious of it.
Yeah, and I want to I want to real quick look at your town center element. So your town center, the town center study area, which is in your general plan, it runs from the old Chinese restaurant, you know, on Lima, right? It runs all the way to, oh, it's interesting. It doesn't include um commercial that's further east than the Good Earth. So maybe we should say commercial areas. I don't know.
Well, I mean, we're including all the areas, really. Uh it may be that we're intending just these areas, but it would apply to the CL.
Right.
Would theoretically apply to the OAL.
Yeah.
I mean, right, so um.
Would you be better if we said added an S in all of them to the area?
Or just take out the downtown and the commercial and just reference areas, maybe? Uh but anyway, but we can talk about that. My other comment before I pass the torch to the other commissioners on the uh really great attachment D that I really appreciate you putting together this table that shows sort of how the the thing evolved. Um it was missing uh chronology, maybe a timeline at the bottom. We've got less space at the bottom of this. And I was thinking, you know, you start out with uh nineteen forty-seven, ordinance two eighty, and which zones are any effect at that point, maybe in the parenthetical? And then nineteen seventy-one, ordinance three fifty-two. And, you know, you got ten zones at that point. And then ordinance five hundred in nineteen eighty-two. And uh in nineteen ninety-one, we have two more zones added. In two thousand two, we make design review applicable in the UR zones. And this codification mistake was made after that uh ordinance six eighty-eight was adopted in two thousand two. And then in two thousand seventeen, uh the multifamily senior zone RMS RMS was created. You know, just to sort of uh show a more linear uh story as a timeline, I think would be helpful. In addition, and if you want me to send you these little items that I have written my notes on, I can do that, too.
I would love your notes. Any help I can get.
Okay, is there any other Commissioner Swift?
Um if if we're looking at the and the resolution twenty twenty-one oh four now, which we seem to be doing. 2021-04, now, which we seem to be doing, and the town council ordinance on A1, because we want to highlight, or not have the reader assume this only applies to our downtown corridor, um, I was looking at our resolution, the first whereas, that where it says the town of Fairfax contains a developed commercial district along portions of Sir Francis Drake, Broadway, blah, blah, blah. And then it speaks to various multifamily developments. It doesn't speak there to um, commercial areas outside of the downtown area, so it makes the reader, to me, assume that we're only talking downtown. So I was thinking of where it says the town of Fairfax contains a developed commercial district primarily along portions of Sir Francis Drake, Broadway, Belinus, et cetera. That would, um, take that away from the reader thinking that we're only talking downtown.
Thinking that it doesn't apply to Deer Park Villa.
Without the primarily, correct?
Right, again.
Um, and then as far as the town council's ordinance, um, if we can correct the spelling in the title on significant.
Okay, oh, yes. Um, I put it through spell check, too.
And then the third whereas, um, sort of along the same thought pattern as our resolution, where it says the exterior color and structural design components of the commercial buildings in the downtown commercial zones.
Out downtown, what do you think? The commercial zones.
Components of the commercial buildings in commercial zones, or?
I, I, I got lost there, and I'm sorry.
Just delete everything after "commercial buildings."
Third, whereas, about town center in parentheses.
Do, do that again, Mimi.
Uh, the exterior color and structural design components of the commercial buildings create and maintain the small-town character.
Yeah, I think that works. What about?
And with, without even referencing "commercial zones"?
Yeah. We don't have any commercial buildings on residentially zoned properties that I
Okay.
Know of.
Okay. My, cause my other thought was just to throw in "commercial buildings, particularly in the downtown commercial zones," um, but that's fine as well.
Well, that focuses on it, so I think this is a better idea, maybe.
Components of the commercial buildings and, and leave out "commercial zones" entirely, and just say "create, maintain."
Yes.
And maybe when you get to the end of the sentence, it says the commercially developed properties along primarily, blah, 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 Sir Francis Drake. Get your primarily back in there.
Does that sound good?
Or you can say "including but not limited to," you know, again, that's one of my tricks.
What do you think, including but not limited to, or primarily?
Yeah.
I like the "not limited to."
I do, too.
Cause it doesn't, it, it takes away the focus from the downtown.
I have a macro. I type IBNLT, and that's what I get.
Okay, so is anybody willing to make a motion that includes all of those changes?
Well, I have another.
I can list the changes.
Comment. I did have another comment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Phil.
Um, I would like to make mention in one of these whereas's of the one historical fact that's been left out, which is kind of key, and that is the his, the, the inadvertent, um, nature of the, of the, of the language that we're putting back in. And so we, we want to say maybe something like, um, you know, whereas the codification company apparently inadvertently removed certain alterations or additions language from the applicability section of the, of the design review ordinance, and so another whereas, that's all. And maybe it would come right after the ordinance 668, uh, whereas.
And, uh, whereas the codification company inadvertently, say it again.
The codification company apparently will even say inadvertently removed, you can change this, and this is me, uh, inadvertently removed certain alterations or additions, that then quotes that phrase language from the quote "applicability" end quote section of the design review ordinance. And then the next whereas is staff has prepared such an ordinance, et cetera. And by the way, I agree with all the other changes everybody else has made.
And where did you think that that, that whereas would go?
I would think right after the last one on the first page of attachment A.
After the town council.
Maybe it would be a new top of attachment, A, second page.
Uh, so not in the ordinance, but in the resolution?
Resolution.
In the resolution, right, not, not necessarily. So it just, there's a record of that. And I think that's a good thing to mention, because it's, uh, it might be considered by some to be an unusual thing to do, but it isn't. We're just fixing a stupid mistake. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, is anybody willing to, uh, make, oh, yeah, no, Linda, you, I'm sorry, you can't make the motion.
No, no, I wasn't gonna make the motion. I was just going to list the changes.
Can, can I just ask one quick question on Phil's comments? So in the, and you'll just refresh my memory, Linda, on the whereas above it, that last sentence on the whereas above that says this language was inadvertently removed with the adoption of ordinance 688. So that.
So maybe we can just expand that to use Phil's language right there. Would that work for you, Phil?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, does that work for everybody else?
Yes.
I think because, yeah, inadvertently removed, we don't want that to have been, it wasn't a political decision. It was an inadvert-
Right, that's a very good point.
Third-party decision somehow. Gotta watch who our contractors are, anyway.
Okay, is there anybody willing to make that, that motion with these, these changes? Uh, Commissioner Newton?
Okay, um, I will move for, uh, adoption of resolution number 2021-04 uh, of the planning commissioner of the town of Fairfax, recommending the Fairfax Town Council adopt an ordinance XX entitled "An Ordinance in the Town Council of the Town of Fairfax," amending chapter 17.020, and adding section 17.020.030C to include the requirement of a design review permit for changes in the exterior color of a structure or the alteration of significant, with that spelled correctly, design element, which is a part of the design of the building in all zones, except RD 5.5-7, RS 6, RS 7.5, UR 7, and UR 10, with the following changes. To the first whereas clause, the town of Fairfax contains a developed commercial district, primarily along portions of Sir Francis Drake, uh, adding an S to the word multifamily developments throughout town, uh, moving down to the bottom of the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth whereas clause, uh, adding the language, uh, offered by Commissioner Green with resp-
Okay.
Oh, not offering that, sorry.
No, keep, no, keep going, Commissioner Newton.
To the extent there's anything additional to add there, based on what Commissioner Green read to us. In the last whereas clause, referencing the date of ordinance 66688, which was 2002, and in the attachment A1, uh, correcting the title, the spelling, referencing, uh, in the third whereas clause, uh, the exterior color and structural design components of the commercial buildings create and maintain the small-town character and historical nature of the commercially developed properties, including but not limited to those along Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, Broadway, Belinus, and Center Boulevard. And in the actual language of the proposed ordinance to be added, uh, a reference, a sentence saying that a significant design element includes, but is not limited to, anything that changes the exterior appearance of structures, including height, arrangement on the site, texture, material, color, signs, landscaping, and appurtenances, uh, in order to include that, uh, definition of the significant design element, and including a chronology in attachment B for the town council that runs through the timeline for the history of the ordinances and the zones. You're on mute.
Uh, clarifying that last part, are, is your proposed motion to include attachment B to the physical ordinance, or just a direction to staff to include that in the staff report?
The latter.
Thank you very much. And do we have any amendments, uh, friendly amendments to, um, the resolution or the ordinance as proposed?
I have a question on the motion.
A question on the motion, uh, go ahead.
So going back to the, um, the definition of significant, are, I got confused there. Are we not just referencing, just going with what is already in the design review code, which is?
That's what she quoted. That's what she quoted.
So that's already in there, though?
It's in a different code. It'll be in this one now, but it's replicative lan- language.
Okay, I'm still confused.
I couldn't refer to that, uh, a significant design element includes, but is not limited to, uh, the elements of design identified in, uh, town code section 17.020, 040.
Ben, I'd like to hear from you on, on this proposed change.
B.
Is Ben there? I, I don't, Ben?
Excuse me?
Yeah, Ben, I, I need to hear from you on, on this proposed change, um, because I think it's a bad idea. What's happening is we're looking at the ordinance for the, uh, commercial property one and the definition of significant design elements, and Mimi's proposed motion was that she read from the design review criteria, the criteria in, in that ordinance, and the clarification that Cindy was asking is, shouldn't we just reference this code section 17.020.040B? But what I'm worried about is, I, uh, I think the idea of including the language was good, but referencing back to the design review criteria, does that get messy in terms of what it starts to trigger on the other ordinance?
Yeah, my concern is that if you read that entire section, it actually covers, uh, I believe it covers more than simply building design. And so it would kind of lead, it may lead to confusion about where does it start and where does it stop?
So I think, I think that, uh, so are you saying that by her referencing the subsection B that it will trigger other subsections of that design review criteria, or what, what did you just mean?
Well, you, okay, so you said 17.020.
040B, and Mimi read into the record that significant design elements, uh, such, uh, such as but not including, or something like that, include height, uh, arrangement on the site, texture, material, color, signs, landscaping, and appurtenances, and Cindy wanted that code section read. Do you have any problem with that code section?
Okay, strictly B, not, not the entire section, but just 020.040B?
Correct.
Okay, so.
I think it's better to include what, I think it's better to just include from hi, you know, say, significant design element alterations include height, arrangement on the site, texture, material, color, signs, landscaping, and appurtenances.
Why, Linda, why not the code section? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Because the code section is your list of criteria that you review
Yes.
for, for design review permits for like new, you know, for new projects. I don't.
All right, I will restate that piece of my motion per what Linda just said, so that sentence to be added would read "A significant design element includes, but is not limited to, uh, height, arrangement on the site, texture, material, color, signs, landscaping, and appurtenances," period.
Does that, does that work for you, Cindy?
That's better.
Do we have any other, thank you, uh, staff, does any other, uh, buddy have an amendment to her, uh, motion? I don't see anybody's hands, so I'm gonna say, uh, maybe make a friendly amendment. And that is, there were a couple of other things that were mentioned during the discussion. One is on the resolution, the third whereas, uh, that it's re, it should read, "There is a trend throughout town striking out uh, to building, new buildings, and to," that it would read, whereas there is a trend throughout town to alter existing buildings utilizing exterior color palette, so that was a strike through. And then the other one that I thought we missed was, um, on, um, the ordinance, the first whereas, I thought you guys started to discuss this and say that the town of Fairfax values its small but colorful downtown and small one- and two-story commercial areas. I don't know if you ended up kind of agreeing on that, but that was the change I thought you said.
I'm sorry.
Too late to suggest something else. I hate to say it, triggered by here.
Go there, Commissioner Green, I just want to clarify what, uh, Chair Rodriguez said. So what, what were you referring to as being struck out, and then I can answer your separate question?
On resolution, third whereas, it should read "There is a trend throughout town to alter existing buildings utilizing exterior color palettes and combined shades of black, gray, and white," so we're deleting "building, new buildings, and to."
And then I wasn't making any changes to the reference to the, uh, small downtown areas or, uh, in the, uh, the field of the, so the first whereas clause is a singular, "A small but colorful downtown area." The second whereas clause refers to the commercial areas. We struck out the references to "in the downtown commercial zones," and the third whereas clause, and in the fourth whereas clause, I'm leaving the reference to the singular downtown area.
All right.
So I wasn't changing that. Phil, did you have a recommended change?
Phil, any other change?
Well, when you mentioned that, that, that third whereas, um, and you read out exterior color palettes that combine shades of black, gray, and white, I think it might be good to say.
Now we're back in the reso?
We are.
We're, yeah, um, incompatible historical exterior color palettes, or historically incompatible, uh, exterior color palettes. That all- Or historically incompatible, uh, exterior color palettes. That also shows another aspect of the reasoning behind this. That's all.
I think it's, it's fine the way it is.
Someone's gonna say, what's a, what's a historical incompatible palette? And I wouldn't even know how to answer that.
Then you. I, I'd like to go back to Mimi who's getting the friendly amendment. First, I understand that I gave a friendly.
Skip that.
Hold on just a second. So I just got, uh, I made a friendly amendment and I understood that she accepted. Uh, my first one in the resolution and did not on the second one. And so, uh, uh, and now I want to understand with Phil then, are you sticking to your recommendation to make a friendly amendment or given that feedback, you're not gonna do that?
Right, after Linda, no.
Okay, now Linda, I wanted to go to you. When we started this, you wanted to read us into the record. The other change is, did you feel that Mimi captured everything that you needed or heard?
She captured everything.
Okay, so does Mimi have a second on her motion that was amended?
A second.
Thank you. We have a first and we have a second. And Linda, can you please, uh, take the?
Yes, Green.
Hi.
Newton.
Hi.
Swift.
Hi.
Chair Rodriguez.
You're muted. Oh, sorry.
Thank you very much, everyone. Cindy, that started from you.
Excuse me, I wasn't called to vote.
Oh, I apologize. Oh, I apologize.
I did come in late and so I was not recognized as being here perhaps.
You know, and I, and I did want to recognize for the record that Norma, uh, Commissioner Fregoso arrived at seven thirteen for the record. And I wanted to go back to thanking, uh, Commissioner Swift for catching this in her ordinance review. This is something we can really count on you, Cindy, for keeping your eye on this stuff. And so I think this was a great correction to the ordinance and I'm glad staff even allowed us to take the time to, to do this because I think it was worth it. All right, let's go on to public hearing item number three. Before we do, do this, does anybody need a break? It's eight twelve.
I just, I'm, I'm, I'm a little disconcerted by Phil looking like the god of Fairfax, reaching his hand down onto the street. There you are.
I didn't hear anybody saying they wanted to take a break, so we're gonna go on to public hearing item three. This is forty six San Gabriel, uh, drive application twenty one dash zero five. It's a request for a conditional use permit and a combined side setback variance to construct a hundred and eighty one square foot addition remodel of a second story. Of an existing three bedroom, two bathroom residence to provide a study in the third bedroom and, um, I'll turn it over to Principal Planner Neil.
Okay, first I want to make a very important correction because I incur, I listed the wrong architect in the beginning of the staff report. Laura Kirland is not the architect.
That was a question.
Tristan Warren is the architect and he will speak later on. Okay, so this project encompasses raising the rear portion of the second floor roof by reducing its pitch. Of an existing one thousand nine hundred ninety eight square foot, two story, three bedroom, two bathrooms, single family residence with an attached five hundred and thirty three square foot garage. The increase in the roof height will increase the living space of the second floor by one hundred and eighty one square feet and allow it to be remodeled to accommodate a third bathroom, an office and to expand one of the upstairs bedrooms. The project will not expand the structure beyond the existing footprint of the house. It will result in no onsite soil disturbance or tree removal and will only alter the exterior appearance of the rear half of the structure. The project does not constitute a fifty percent remodel. The site is not located within a quarter mile of any known northern spotted owl nesting site. So a use permit is required for the project because the site, even though it's eight thousand four hundred and fifty square feet in size, it doesn't comply with the minimum seventy five foot width requirement being only sixty two feet wide. It also requires a, um, side yard setback variance because new living space and roof is going to be constructed within the combined twenty foot side yard setback. The existing house exceeds the minimum five foot setback and the addition would exceed the minimum side setbacks. No new windows are proposed on the western or eastern sides of the building. Um, the only new windows face the rear of the property, which, um, backs up against a large, um, piece of property that extends up to the ridge line. It's part of the wall property and the Marshall Rothman property. The project will not alter the facade of the structure as it is seen from the street. And the new addition at the rear will be finished to match the existing siding roofing and trim materials and color. The proposed addition will not increase the peak height of the building above the twenty one foot nine inches that exists now. And it will not result in a structure that's out of scale with the site or that would be out of character with the surrounding neighborhood development. And, um, we are recommending that you approve, that you approve the project by adopting resolution twenty twenty one dash seven. And we also want to point out attachment B, which has letters of support from all of the immediate neighbors to the project site. And that would conclude our report.
Thank you very much. Does, does anybody have any questions for staff on this application? Okay, then I will recognize that I can see in the attendee group, the architect who is not Laura Kirland. Um, but I don't see, uh, the property owners, but I see an anonymous attendee. So, um, Mr., I don't know if it's Mr., so I apologize. Uh, Tristan Warren has his hand up and if you could give us a brief presentation, that would be great. And Linda, I wanted to ask you, was it Tristan's idea to do the shadow study in the pictorial documentation?
We actually at, so Tristan was one of our first applicants after we adopted our new application form. And our application form actually requires the shade studies, but most of the time we waive those, you know? It, a lot of times there's no impact. He did provide them and I found them to be helpful because it really has no impact on the neighbors. And that's shown clearly through those shade studies.
Thank you.
So I don't know if you're gonna, my point being, I don't know if you're gonna see them with every structure. It's up to the planner reviewing the project, whether they feel that extra expense and effort, you know, is necessary.
Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. So I'll try to keep my comments brief. I was gonna talk a little bit about the shadow studies as well, but since they've already been addressed, I'll, I'll leave them as part of the public record. And if people want to have any questions on, if any of the members want to have questions on that, I'll, I'll touch base on that. But I'm gonna, um, in the essence of time, I'm gonna leave off that little portion of my, um, my, um, introduction. So, um, yes, I'm Tristan Warren. I'm the architect, um, for my clients, um, Kevin and Susan Daniels, who are residents at, uh, forty six San Gabriel Drive. Um, and they, um, let me first thank Linda and the rest of staff for really kind of helping guide us through, um, it's, it's been a really easy process. Um, in many ways, and I, I appreciate that. And, um, one of the results was those shadow studies. Um, we were, um, just to put on the public record, um, allowed to waive some things that weren't, um, relevant to our project that are often required in the town. So I do appreciate that. Um, and let me move on now. Um, when I first met Kevin and Susan, um, we discussed a pretty straightforward project. Um, it was just a, basically a second floor addition. Um, you know, as Linda said, they wanted to add, um, an additional bathroom to the bed, their bedroom, a study area in their bedroom. Um, and capture some additional space in the second bedroom upstairs as well as do, um, a remodel of upstairs bathroom and some finishing fixture changes downstairs. Um, one of their major goals was, um, not to touch, um, or and or, um, disrupt more than they had to the living space other than the bathroom downstairs underneath, which constitutes the kitchen, um, a den area and, um, the dining room. So we looked at this and decided that the best way to do this was to work with the existing frame of the house, i.e. the exterior walls. Um, so after looking at a few options for this, we sort of settled on, um, a design style based on a New England salt box, um, home. I, let me share my second screen. I realized I haven't done that yet, so I was gonna go on talking without, um, and referencing things without you being able to see. So, um, in a typical salt box, they, they shift the ridge over and they have a, um, uh, you know, a similar pitch on front and back. We decided not to do that and the main reason for that was, um, as part of what we were designing to, the criteria was to minimize the impact on the rest of the neighborhood. And we felt that doing that would have shifted the ridge over and up and it was easier for us to maintain, um, a minimal impact on the properties adjacent and, um, in the view shed in the, um, larger neighborhood by maintaining, um, the ridge where it was and, um, shifting the, um, pitch of the back roof up to gain that sort of, um, one story at the front, two story at the back style of home. Um, we only raised the, um, eve line here high enough to allow us to get the fenestration in or the windows in at the same head height as the existing windows for consistency there. So there's about twelve inches or so between the eve line and the top of the windows for headers, et cetera, and things like that. Um, we, um, the other obvious reason for going to the outside was to sort of maximize the, um, usable area that we were gaining in the addition. Um, and this isn't a big house. We're not making it substantially bigger, um, but we are making it, um, more usable and user friendly for, um, what my clients', um, goals and desires are. Um, let me briefly just move on to the variance very quickly, um, and the non-conforming. Um, I think Linda's talked about that, but I'd just like to add a couple of comments on the, those issues. Um, as the design took shape, we, um, were talking back and forth with Linda and, um, also Kara at the, um, planning, um, department to make sure we understood, um, what, what the criterias were and what we should be working to, understanding that this was an existing non-conforming home. Um, and we, you know, we understood quite early in the process that the, um, to, um, the conditional use permit for the substandard lot width, um, and the encroachment into this combined side setback were both things that we were gonna have to deal with. Again, that was one of the things that informed us to keep the building mass within basically the existing footprint. Well, it is within the existing footprint and height envelope. In other words, we tried to add to the building without enlarging the building any more than we needed to in those important metrics. Um, regarding the side, um, second, the side setbacks, you know, we're encroaching into the combined side setback by a combined four foot, three inches out of twenty feet. On both sides, we are not in, the building is not in the minimum required five foot setback. Um, and so part of the positive results of those shadow studies that, um, are now part of Fairfax's, um, uh, planning, um, ordinance is that we were able to kind of take a look at how the structure, um, is existing and how it would be proposed. And we saw very little change and impact, um, from one to the other. We also did a quick shadow study, um, on the, um, winter solstice, which is, um, has the biggest shadow impacts for the property on either side, properties on either side. And we did that with a conforming structure. So we took that and we met the side setback requirements to see if there was really any impact between a conforming project proposal and our proposal. And there really wasn't. And, um, I can go into this further if you all would like. Otherwise, um, I'll let that stand for questioning. Um, the only other thing we did to kind of do our due diligence on this was we did a, a, a larger study of um, similar structures or structures that have similar non-conformities in the, um, greater sort of San Gabriel, um, and, um, Miranda, Miranda neighborhood. Um, to make sure that we weren't asking, um, our clients were asking for a special privilege or this wasn't, this was an exception that wasn't prevalent in the neighborhood. And, um, I submitted something, um, with our, um, final, um, submittal for the design review board process. Neighborhood precedence, just showing that in our due diligence, um, and this was actually done, um, before we even submitted for the variance. We found eight properties that sort of conformed to a certain criteria. That's either the lot is similar size or slightly smaller than the lot of, um, my clients. Um, the structure is either larger or, um, of the same size as what we're proposing. And that these buildings had, um, three or more bathrooms and three or more bedrooms, similar to, again, the metrics of the proposed project. What we found was that there were eight projects that met this criteria. Were two stories and also from what we could tell from our due diligence with, um, Google Earth and Street View. Um, we're likely encroaching into the combined side setback. So based on this, we, we brought this up with Linda and staff and basically said, look, based on our, our review, it appears that we're not the only people who have a non-conforming house who have a similar condition. Um, so in wrapping up my comments, um, I'd just like to say, you know, based on our review, the shadow study, the adjacent parcel are, um, addition will not significantly impact any of the adjacent parcels, as is, I think, evident of, from the support letters. Um, and the fact that this is not a unique structure to the neighborhood, um, you know, we just, I'd just like to, um, further sort of reinforce the hope that, um, this is a project that's approvable in its current form, um, by the design review board. Um, I'm happy to answer questions as they arise, um, but I'd like to introduce, um, my client Kevin Daniel, if he is indeed the anonymous gentleman um, in the audience, um, to, uh, just give a brief chat about why it's important to him and his family.
Hello, yep, hang on, here we go. Yeah, there I am. That's, sorry, sorry, it's taking me a little while to get going here. Uh, my name's Kevin Daniel. I'm the, um, property owner at forty six San Gabriel with my wife, Susan Daniel. Um, we've been in, living in the home for about thirty two years now, raising our three kids here. We thought, you know, go, going into our, hopefully our next thirty years, we would enjoy a master bathroom. Kind of make our, um, senior years a little bit more comfortable. And so that's what kind of started this, um, whole project. The, the way our house is now, again, we have two bathrooms. Um, our kids are all moved out, but they're, you know, when we have family events and stuff and we have grandchildren now, the, the house can be, um, quite small. It feels quite small, especially the bathrooms. Um, they get a little overloaded. And so a, a master bathroom would be wonderful in our, um, feelings. Anyway, um, it doesn't seem like a, a, a big project, but it would make our lives, um, a little bit more enjoyable. Like I say, going in the second half of our thirty years, hopefully here. So that's about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daniels. Um, did anybody have any questions then for either Mr. Warren or Mr. Daniels?
I had a question.
Commissioner Fregoso?
Uh, thank you. I, I had a, a very straightforward question. I, I was confused about. I understand about the side yard setback being shy on one side of the property. Is your construction intruding further into that setback? Or are you maintaining the same setback as before?
We're maintaining the same setback as before. So we're not, nothing that we're doing is exceeding the existing footprint of the building. We're simply building up on the exterior walls.
Uh, I, I absolutely understand and it just wasn't perfectly clear to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners with questions? I wanted to ask, um, on your letters of support, they reference, um, after reviewing the documents provided, what did you provide?
Um, we provided, um, profiles of the house, um, mainly the, um, existing structure, way it looks now, and then the proposed structure. Um, so they could kind of see a difference of what it was. And I'm not sure if there was the floor plan. We may have done that also.
So all four elevations then are particularly the back and side?
Yeah, mainly the, uh, it's more like the three dimensional view, so you could really get a good kind of feel for it.
Thank you.
What, what I provided for, um, Kevin and Susan for the neighbors, um, was a little more user friendly. Since I use a three D modeling program, I did provide the elevations, but to make sure that it was able to be understood by people who didn't read documents that well, I also provided some three D views. Um, similar, um, to what I'm showing, oops, sorry, that's the wrong one. This is the one I wanted. Oh, I'm not, I'm not sharing here.
No, you'll have to share.
Um, my apologies. I'm so used to just continuously sharing that, um. But similar to this view, but a couple of other views simply, um, from, from sort of bird's eye from the other direction so that all the neighbors could sort of see how the house impacted from them. Um, so that didn't get, um, included as part of the public record, but I'd be happy to share that with the commissioners if they'd like to see it.
Thank you. And then I had another question regarding the shadow study. Since this is new for the town, um, in some ways, I felt like there was some initial judgments that can be made based upon the location of the parcel, the angle of the building. And then from that, once you've said a yes, no, then kind of deciding, um, because we saw, uh, multiple iterations of different drawings. And I'm just wondering from your perspective, just a one oh one on this, could we have gotten a lot less drawings? Um, and if so, what would it have been? Because I think it was very helpful for us to see. And if so, what would it have been? Because I think it was very helpful for us to see the drawings. But I was, in some ways, I was feeling a bit overloaded, like we didn't have to go to this extent. So I'm wondering from your professional opinion, do you always, for shadow studies, show all of these? Or could we have went with less?
No, that was sort of the specific criteria of the town, Commissioner Rodriguez. And, you know, I, without speaking out of turn, I mean, the equinoxes typically aren't the biggest shadow impacts. The biggest, and the summer solstice is not, the biggest shadow impact for most houses is going to be in the wintertime when the sun angle is low. That said, from an enjoyment standpoint, the one that I would be most concerned about if it was a neighbor to my house would be the summer, the summer solstice, because obviously if it's shadow, you know, it's casting a bunch of shadows in my backyard when I'm, you know, trying to enjoy the outside, that's important. I don't quite know how to weed it down. I think what could have happened, what could happen, and I don't want to, you know, I know that Ben and Linda are on top of this, but there might be a way before we get to the, the hearing, that we can weed out ones that are redundant or don't, don't have a huge impact. Because, you know, when I'm printing 12 sheets of shadow studies, I'm kind of cringing at the amount of paper that I'm using and dollars that I'm spending for my clients. I think that, you know, in this one, showing the winter, winter solstice would have been, for this, for the purposes of the hearing, would have been sufficient. But I, I think that from my standpoint, I would want staff to be able to evaluate all the conditions, just in case things, things are different from, from one to another.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we'll ask if there is any members of the public that would like to speak on this item. If you could please raise your hand. We're not seeing any members of the public raising their hand on this item. I'll bring it back to the planning commission. Any thoughts on this application? Commissioner Frigoso.
Thank you. A couple of comments regarding the shadow studies. I can appreciate that they are sometimes helpful. I think it was an absolute waste of paper and money to replicate 10 gigantic pages of each of these for all of these packets. I don't think it's necessary. I have seen different types of shadow studies that are less voluminous, that tend to summarize the impacts in one or two smaller pages. I would highly recommend that staff not have this be a typical requirement. It, it's possible to also get these, that staff could get them electronically. And if the need arises, summarize and provide them in a more streamlined format that is frankly, not so dizzying as trying to get through these pages. I would rather have seen perhaps what went out to the neighborhood in terms of, I've gone through these, I've gone through these plans over and over again, and, and I have yet to really understand what was changed and to see a really good site plan of what the additions were. Not that I have any problem with the nature of additions and the size and the way you've gone about it. It just wasn't perfectly clear from the plans, but other than that, I have one kind of silly question. If, if the owner would indulge me, I, I'm looking at the peak of the roof over the garage. And for the life of me, I, I can't understand, is that a usable second story above that garage? I know there's many of these in the neighborhood, but I've not been inside one. And I don't know, is that usable space? Is that for?
Yeah, we have a little bit of storage up there, but it's not, it's not usable space. Yeah, it's just, it's just a high ceiling garage is what it is.
Right, right. And I know that seems to be the look of the area. Anyway, I will leave it at that. Thank you for that information. That's not something that you need to deal with or that you are proposing to change.
Commissioner Green.
I, I thought the project is great. I mean, you really did, you're improving a house to the extent of making the same footprint more usable. You're not changing any of your basic specs setback-wise. And it's kind of brilliant. So I, and I also thought the plans were great. As far as shadow studies go, I mean, really, we need to see those when sort of there's solar required and things like that, but also, of course, the impact on the neighbors. So that was a very thoughtful thing to include, I thought. And, and, yeah, the volume of paper. Listen, I vote for all electronic packets. I don't want any more paper. I think that is a huge waste of paper, because with electronics, we can zoom in on a piece, you know, and you can see every, every nut and bolt and nail in that project that way, which I can't with my glasses and the paper. I can't really focus that close. So I can actually see better plans on the computer. Thank you. I think the project is, is great. I'm ready to approve it myself.
Any other comments or perspectives from the commission, Commissioner Swift?
No, I just, I support the project as well. And when we get to that point in time, I'll have a correction on the rezo. So thank you.
I agree. I think that the architect did a really great job of design placement and respect for the neighborhood. And I, I actually appreciated the pictorial analysis that was done, as well as the shadow study. I agree with Commissioner Frigoso about doing a summary or having staff kind of maybe look at the electronic version and decide what to include. So I, I think trying to figure out, like, this is the extreme in numbers, how to make it tighter and nicer, but I really thought it told the story that we often are trying to calculate and look at plans and try to figure out. So I thought it was a good use of it. So is anybody willing to make a motion on this item?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, well, we haven't heard about corrections to the rezo there.
You can make your motion and then people can do a friendly amendment.
Sure, we can, we can make the motion. So I'll make a motion to approve the project.
All right. Do we have a second?
I, I will second the motion to approve APN 001261-44, use permanent combined side yard setback variance 2105.
I see that Commissioner Swift has her hand up. Will you accept a friendly amendment to a first and a second? Actually, we should be moving along with that unless you have a correction, Commissioner Swift.
I'm open to amendments that are friendly.
The only correction I had on the rezo was the chair's name at the end.
I'm sorry, what was?
You're so sweet. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. It's an amendment to page six. My name is spelt wrong. Okay, so we've got a first and a second. If we could take a roll call vote.
Frigoso?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Chair Rodriguez?
Yes. The motion passes. Your application has been approved. I want to let you know that there is a, Linda, is it a 10-day appeal period? Yes, so there's a 10-day appeal period. Anybody from the public or yourself could appeal this application. Contact the city clerk if you choose to do that, along with your application fee. But other than that, Mr. Daniels, good luck to you and your family, and thank you very much, Mr. Warren, for a good application. Okay, moving on to discussion item number four, the discussion of the zoning map of the boundaries of the ridgeline scenic corridor, Director Bertone.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Staff continues to try to develop a ridgeline scenic corridor map, a diagram, to show the ridgeline scenic corridor as defined in zoning chapter 17.06. So the reason that this is important is because we cannot implement the ridgeline scenic corridor regulations until we have diagrammed, i.e. mapped the area to which those regulations apply. Knowing that this is the seventh meeting, if we can do it one more meeting, we'll be on a full year of, of review of this seemingly simple notion. Commissioner Newton, two meetings ago, assisted staff with graphically, a graphical demonstration of why the 100-foot vertical ridgeline scenic corridor cannot be fully applied as it is currently written. And I could put the diagram up again. It's in your packet and you've seen it. But in any event, that ombre, which color gradated the vertical elevations of the town into 100-foot segments, 100-foot vertical segments, showed that, for example, just for the lower portion of the majority of the designated ridgelines in the ridgeline scenic corridor, the elevation between 200-foot and 300-foot elevation would result in 10 miles of the hillside areas of the town being within the ridgeline scenic corridor. And that when you fully applied the 100-foot vertical ridgeline scenic corridor, it would apply to the entire 100, the entire hillside area of the town. And that's allowing for some judgment to say, well, it doesn't really say, don't apply it to the flatland areas, but we know it's definitely not going to be applied to that. So working with staff, Commissioner Newton came up with a recommendation regarding, as an interim step, I, to apply a 35-foot vertical ridgeline scenic corridor boundary. And the reason she arrived at that was because when you look at our hillside areas, the maximum height that any house can be built is 35 feet. And so the idea would be to protect the ridgeline of adjoining, in a ridgeline scenic corridor designated ridgeline, which are all the major ridgelines in town, that the ridgeline of that, of that ridge would be protected from protrusion of the maximum height house into the plane of that ridgeline. In other words, that within 35 vertical feet, extended out laterally from the ridgeline at any point, you would trigger the ridgeline scenic corridor on the basis of the 35-foot vertical drop. And we had a partial diagram showing that 35-foot ridgeline scenic corridor. The commission requested that staff return with that fully diagram. We have done so. And in fact, we have combined that with the two ridgeline scenic corridor designated areas for which there has been prior commission consensus that they should be mapped and utilized. And that is the 150-foot horizontal ridgeline scenic corridor, which is basically a tube running 150 feet on either side of the ridgeline. And to take the 1974 visual resources map and digitize and geo-reference it for accuracy. So in other words, that 1974 hand-drawn map is now very accurately geo-related to physical features that exist in reality. And, and we've drawn the ridgeline scenic corridor as it existed on that map against that accurate map. So what you have before you in attachments B and C are the two combined ridgeline scenic corridor maps. The, it's got the 35-foot vertical. So again, I, staff considers this sort of an interim step until we have the bandwidth to dive into, what are we really trying to do with 100-foot? We clearly don't want to punish every hillside property in town with having to get photographs from public arterials and other public gathering places in town. That would be extremely punitive for all hillside properties to now suddenly be subjected to that. And yet that would be the result if we tried to apply 100-foot vertical ridgeline scenic corridor. So this 35 feet is an interim measure. It applies vertical ridgeline scenic corridor protections and would include this in the diagram. So staff has these cumulative maps. If you look at the ridgeline scenic corridors that are developed on, that are shown on attachments B and C, the one that we would recommend adopting and applying would be attachment C, which shows the entirety of the visual resources map. I believe there was some concern that if we just zoomed in on the town area, we might miss certain features, visually significant areas that are defined outside town. So that's zoomed out. The good news is, as a, as a digital document, we don't lose any resolution by zooming in. So when somebody in town wishes to use that, they would be able to go to Marin Map, for example, click on their property boundaries and then click on the layer that shows Fairfax's ridgeline cumulative combined ridgeline scenic corridor and determine at a glance whether their property was at all subject to it. And if it was, whether there were portions that were in or out. So it's been a long road. At the last meeting, three commissioners were in favor of taking the combined cumulative approach. One wasn't. Staff doesn't feel comfortable basically applying a diagrammatic version of a town regulation if we don't have at least a consensus of a quorum of commissioners. In other words, four commissioners voting for it. So staff's recommendation is, this is probably as good as it's going to get for the foreseeable future. And that we treat this as work in progress, something for which it would be helpful to have a cumulative map that does include some vertical protection. As noted at the last meeting, and you can see on your diagrams, where the finger ridges run off the primary ridges, the 35-foot vertical captures that. And I think that's probably the main importance of that, is there's places where you would want to have a designated ridgeline scenic corridor that extends beyond, for example, the 150-foot horizontal distance from the ridge. And this will do that on those finger ridges that extend out from the main ridge. So staff's prepared to answer any questions and would hope that your commission could take action tonight in terms of a recommendation to staff to apply this cumulative map.
Hi, Dan. We have two hands raised. Commissioner Swift.
So question for you. You're talking about just 35 feet. So if I've got a parcel now that's within the 150-foot horizontal, and let's say my parcel is down 60 feet from that 150-foot horizontal, would that be captured in your 35-foot area?
It wouldn't be captured in the 30-foot, 35-foot, the portions that are below 35-foot, but it would be captured if, as you represent, it's within 150-foot, because the map that you see overlays all of those elements. So it overlays the horizontal area or the land area captured within the vertical 35-foot drop. It also captures the 150-foot horizontal distance from the ridgeline. And it also captures the, the land area that's shown in the traditional 1974 map. So it doesn't subtract at all from either the historic map or the 150-foot. It's, it would simply be additive in those instances where, for example, a finger ridge existed, that it would extend beyond either of those two boundaries.
So it's not only, you're not only capturing, because it was a little confusing when I was reading the staff report, you're not only capturing properties that, parcels that would be 35 feet down from the ridgeline. You're capturing anything that has the potential, whether the parcel hat is improved already and is there, but can add on or put but can add on or put on an accessory building. You would capture anything at this point within that 150-foot horizontal that has the potential to cross that 35-foot line, if you will.
Right. I'm going to share a screen just so that you could visually see what I'm describing. Okay, let me zoom in.
So what attachment are you referring to from our packet?
Yes, this is Attachment C.
Thank you.
So let me continue to zoom in, and we'll just pick a ridge here, all zoomed in. So what you see on this ridge, this area here captures the 35-foot vertical distance.
I'm sorry, where are you pointing? I can't see where.
I'm sorry, can you see my cursor? It's in the north.
Oh, okay, I see it. It was right off the edge.
Yeah, it's, what I need is a finger pointer, and there probably is one. Maybe if I click on this, let's just see. No, I don't know. I'll wait, I'll.
Can you move the map down?
I won't do it live, but in any event, what you can see is the 35-foot vertical extending well past the 150-foot horizontal. And you can see the 150-foot horizontal is sort of that shade darker than this area here. And then as you go further down this ridge right here, you can see that darker green, which is the original 1974 map. So this, when we're doing a cumulative map, what it would cover is the outside edge of all this. And for simplicity's sake, we didn't overlay that on any parcels. But once this is submitted to Marin Map, it will become a layer in their GIS system. And so if you own property that's on or near a ridge line, you would simply click on your property and then go to the Fairfax data and click on ridgeline scenic corridor. And it would come up with this map with your parcel shown. You would be zoomed in even more. You know, you'd be zoomed into something like, something like this, or even, and so your parcel would be a rectangle in this area or next to this area, or partially in or partially out. So then you would know very accurately, or certainly as accurately as use of the Assessor's Parcels map would tell you. And then if there was a question, oh, I'm either definitely in, or maybe I'm partially in or out, then you go to the survey and say, okay, this is our map, this is how we got it. If you're going to contest that you're in, you know, staff would make a determination. Then they could hire a surveyor to do their own very detailed site-specific analysis. Staff believes in the vast majority of cases, somebody who owned property on or near a ridge line would be able to determine straight from Marin Maps whether they're in or out, and there wouldn't be much, much contesting on that point.
Through the chair. One moment, there's another hand raised before you, and then Commissioner Green, and then Fragoso.
Okay, my question is, on these maps, there's some little, am I unmuted? Okay, there's some sort of thumbprint-looking areas. There are straight vertical lines.
Right.
What are those?
Those are visual resource areas, and it's, they're fascinating, because for example, over here on the left side of the screen, that's in a bowl. It's a beautiful area, but when the GIS person and I looked at it, we were intrigued, because it doesn't appear to be visible from anywhere unless you're on the ridges directly around it. But this, for example, is Jolly Hill, the land that opens slope directly above St. Rita's School. And I think all would agree that that's one of the more visually prominent hillside areas in town. So you could see that there was definitely a concern and a recognition of these visually prominent areas. But they're not designated ridgeline scenic corridors.
Right, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fragoso?
Yes. Thank you, Ben. Can you go back to the enlarged portion we were looking at just before this? It's at the top of Glen Drive Ridge. Yes, right there. That's, that's close enough. Can you please tell me what those lines mean? What each of those lines represent, or not lines, but areas? The purple, the red, the blue, the green, please. What's 35? What's 100? What is vertical? What is horizontal? Which is, what's up and what's down?
Okay, so, because the focus is really on the 35-foot vertical. That is this aquamarine area. If you can see my cursor waving around here.
I see the aquamarine, not your cursor, but I do see the aquamarine area. So is that 35 feet
Vertical.
Out, straight out horizontally from the top of the ridge? Or is that down vertically from the top of the ridge?
Yeah, it's, boy, this is, it's hard to explain it verbally. But what it says is that you drop 35 feet in a plumb line down from that ridge, and then you extend out along a level plane until you hit the ground. And so in this case, that 35-foot, this is pretty darn level. And so you could see where the 150-foot is, which is right here, and that just keeps going.
I can't see your cursor. If you could tell me
Let me just.
where right here is. Is right here the edge of the blue line? Is right here the purple line?
The lightest color, blue-green, is the 35-foot vertical. The next lightest color, and you can tell where it is, because you see the red ridgelines, the designated ridge line. There's a green that very accurately follows the shape of that. That's the 150-foot, because all we've done is mapped 150 feet laterally horizontally out from those ridges at every point.
I got you.
Above it and below it, you're seeing a tube that's cumulatively 300 feet wide with the ridge line in the middle, and it follows that ridge line very carefully. Now, finally, you get to the 1974 map. And this is where I almost feel like they knew that the one that they were really going for was the 150-foot horizontal, because there's a few places where it's wider than the 150-foot, and there's a few places where it's narrower. But mostly, it's within a couple dozen feet of the 150-foot. So you could see, this is out of the town, but you see that dark green? Just out. Okay, that dark green is part of it. And so as you come down this ridge, there's a couple places where it emerges as the farthest point. But the thing I want to emphasize is that when we use this horizontal map, what we're going to do is we're going to draw a line around the outermost perimeter of all three of these combined RSCs. And so that line will be easily understood when anybody, whether it's, you know, staff, a property owner, developer, your commission. I don't anticipate there will be a lot of argument about that as it's applied.
Perfect, thank you. I agree with that. And particularly, my concern on our last review was that you were not incorporating all three of these views and measurements, whereas now you do have the ability to cross-reference, geo-reference, and really map them out. So I'm very much in favor of that. Thank you.
So I have a clarifying question. And so when I look at the code, 17060030, where it says, "No building, accessory building, or structure shall be erected within the ridgeline scenic corridor as defined by blah, blah, blah." And then you look at the definition, and the definition says that it will be 100-foot vertical on the major ridge by 150-foot of a horizontal ridge. So are you proposing then to return with a modification to amend this definition to then be 25 feet? That's my first.
35 feet, not at this time. I think we would add that to a future work program.
How could you interpret it then if it's not in the code? The code says 100 feet.
Well, because as we know, the code means the entirety of the town. And so clearly, we can't use that as it's written. The 35 feet is the farthest that we can apply a vertical ridgeline scenic corridor boundary and have it bear some reasonable relationship to the actual defined ridgelines, these red lines.
I'm sorry, you lost me there. Okay, so here we're looking at an ordinance that applies to areas that have ridgeline development, and there's the definition of the 100 and 150. And you said something like, that definition applies to the town, but what I'm trying to interpret doesn't apply to the town, right? You got me lost there.
Okay, well, I guess it's a choice between using 35 feet or dropping the 100-foot entirely. Because if I can't get a consensus of the commission to agree to this, I will simply have to accept that in a year of meetings that staff, our GIS specialists in the commission, has not been able to agree on if or how to apply that 100-foot vertical. And that if you study it closely, you know that applying that would would include every parcel in town, which staff isn't going to do. I mean, you know, I can't in good faith apply it to somebody who's in the flatland area. I can't apply it to somebody who's 1,000 feet away from the ridge line. So it's unusable.
Okay, so yes, is the answer then? You'd be proposing to amend that language? And then going on then in the ordinance under criteria for review of an application subsection nine, which is, it has three parts to it. All structures shall be located so that the roof does not extend above the ridge line, and that no part of the building may exceed 35 feet to the adjacent grade, and that when a ridge is flat, we allow placement. It says, "No part of the roof, the structure, may extend more than 15 feet above the lowest elevation of the adjacent ridge line." So how does then the modification of the 100 vertical feet down to 35 vertical feet, then modify? I guess it would not change A, which is that a roof could not go above the ridge line. It wouldn't, it would not change, let's see, no part of a building may exceed 35 feet of an adjacent ridge. I guess what it would change is where we started to talk about the concern about the lower parcels and the town being included. I think I get nervous about when I'm standing on the valley floor and I'm looking up at all of these gorgeous ridges. And the intent of this code is that those parcels being looked at from this criteria, this significant view corridor or this design review criteria, and somehow we went to a concern about the parcels on the valley floor to just the 35 vertical feet. So we're... Okay, all right. I think you answered my question. Thank you. I'm sorry, was there any other? So Commissioner Newton hasn't had a chance to speak, and then Commissioner Swift. And we should probably go to public feedback too when we're done with that.
Yeah, I guess I have more comments than questions. So, you know, I'd like to respond to a lot of what the other commissioners are saying, but I agree, we should probably get a public comment first.
Commissioner Swift, do you have any more clarifying questions before we go to the public for feedback? And then we'll come back to the planning commission for more.
So, and it was a little bit along what you were addressing in my original question. When I look at staff report on page two, top paragraph, it says, and this is what makes me a little concerned. It says, "Instead, a 35-foot vertical RSC zone focuses on areas where a house might otherwise broach the ridge line to apply RSC regulations." And when I look at the code, it says, "No building, accessory, general requirements, no building, accessory building, or structure modification therefore shall be erected within the ridgeline scenic corridors as defined on the Visual Resources map." So we're not talking about just the ridge line. We're talking about the ridgeline scenic corridors, which are identified as those by the planning commission as places from which the visual impact of the development in a ridgeline scenic corridor could be significant. So again, looking at specific areas in town and looking up at those ridgeline scenic corridors, the impact of a potential structure there. So I guess I would ask you, Ben, how do you address that aspect of the code? Because it's not necessarily just 35 feet down. And the staff report talks about broaching the ridge line where we know the code itself is broader than what we look at it just going above a ridge line. If that question makes sense.
Yeah, well, the first thing is that this is cumulative. So it would incorporate the ridgeline scenic corridor as the town has attempted to apply it for the last 46 years, i.e. straight from the 1974 Visual Resources map. We've now digitized that, so we know that that exists in space. It also very accurately defines 150 feet off of an actual ridge line. So that's, and that's added to the 1974. Now we're just talking about how we try to preserve some vertical component to the ridgeline scenic corridor. And the 35 feet basically says, if you are within 35 vertical feet of that ridge line, it doesn't matter where you are horizontally relative to the ridge line. If you're within 35 feet, you're going to be subject to the ridgeline scenic corridor regulations. So then we get a chance to look at, you know, how tall is that house? How tall does it have to be? Take your pictures from the public view. You know, all the triggers that the Visual Resources Chapter 17.060 brings to play. And your commission had that when it looked at a project recently on Ridgeway Avenue, which I thought was fortuitous, because it was a real-world application where, you know, the regulations say you can't be more than 15 feet above the ridge line. And that house, I believe, started out at something like 14 feet something above the ridge. So clearly, the applicant and his architect were aware of that regulation and knew that they were within the ridgeline corridor, which they were, of course, and designed their house accordingly. So it, we're just adding protection to what we've done. And we're also saying that instead of using a 46-year-old list of residences, which, you know, there were hundreds of parcels which that list didn't capture, we will now have all of the parcels captured and available. You know, we'll develop a quickie list for easy reference. But the real thing we will do is have this as a digital product. So you just take the parcel layer and put the ridgeline scenic corridor layer and see where the boundaries are. So it's more protection for the town.
Sorry. So more protection. We'll go ahead and open the meeting for anybody in the public attendees list who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. We have no member of the public raising their hand on this item. Back to Commissioner Newton.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Carr, because I really appreciate it. Oh, thank you, Commissioner Chair Rodriguez. I really appreciate it. Um, and I appreciate everybody's patience because, you know, in my view, this is a really important ordinance, and even though we keep coming back around to it, uh, I know that the citizens of Fairfax hold our ridge line ordinance very dear. And I think what I've been trying to figure out is what practical tools staff can use to assist in sort of, you know, business of reviewing, uh, proposals for, you know, additions and developments and, and be able to provide concrete uh, information about what is or is not in what our ordinance refers to as the protected area. And, um, you know, if we're not going to uh, you know, have a sort of a breakdown of how are we going to amend this ordinance so that it is meaningful? And captures, uh, all of what, you know, I think Commissioner Chair Rodriguez, you were talking about, and Commissioner Swift was talking about in terms of preserving, uh, you know, as much of the beauty from, uh, the significant areas, whether it's on top of a ridge line, looking down at a bowl that you can't see from the, from the road, or, uh, walking down downtown and looking up at Jolly Hill, or, or, uh, even as you're going outside of town and in the beautiful, uh, hills that we have. Um, you know, I think one of my concerns was the practical tool should be, uh, you know, as comprehensive as possible. You know, as an artist, I probably, uh, would have chosen different colors for these visuals that, uh, made clearer delineations between, you know, what was horizontal and what was vertical, and, uh, you know, where they overlapped and where they bled out from each other. Because I think in one of the previous iterations of your map, we all saw when we, we staff tried to outline how the horizontal and the vertical uh, edges bled out from the green ridge lines with the red line down the middle that were in the old map, the visual resources map, that, you know, to me, it was exciting because you would be able to identify specific parcels that might fall within this code. But the code, you know, as we discussed previously, uh, has language that makes it very difficult to say, you know, this parcel is in, that parcel is out. Uh, I think when Ben and I first started looking at this with Jill, uh, our GIS contractor, you know, it seemed like every house in the town, maybe except mine, maybe because I'm so close down to the creek, you know, maybe, but then this was another issue I'll take with the ombre that you did, because you know, there's so much white on this page, it doesn't really even get across the idea that at my end of town where the creek is, and it looks white there, it actually is part of this color scheme. This area is, you know, within a hundred feet, uh, vertical distance of some of the lower ends of those ridges that go from high elevations and come all the way into town. And so when you map something that's a thirty-five-foot above sea level ridge, and you want everything within a hundred vertical feet of that, you're literally going below sea level, and it wouldn't make any sense. So, you know, as an artist, I would take some quibbling with just some of the visuals, but I, I really appreciate the fact that we aren't talking about a tool that would just be limited to those green lines on the original visual resources map. That we're talking about a tool that would get that hundred and fifty-foot horizontal, no problem. And then try to come up with a practical uh, boundary for the vertical. And I agree with you guys in the concerns about some of the other language in, in the ordinance. But I feel like if we're just sticking with a tool and we're looking at the thirty-five, maybe there's another thing we can add to that, but, um, I think it's important that if we're gonna amend the ordinance, we're gonna have to really roll up our sleeves and holistically at the whole thing and how it fits together and really make a call on how we want to deal with it. And that, you know, at least what we're doing here is demonstrating that there's some uh, preference for not having development when it could uh, mar the, the ridge line. So I don't know, I'm just battling on, I guess, at this point, but I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward, and I guess I really want to hear you know, Michelle, when we went through this at our last meeting and you voted against this, I really wanted to hear more about the concerns that you guys have, and if the concerns are that it doesn't reflect what the ordinance says, because we don't have a hundred-foot vertical instead of, you know, thirty-five-foot vertical in our ordinance. I don't know how we justify my house in the bottom of the creek being within the ridge line ordinance, so.
Okay, so I guess to answer that, um, question, the way I'm interpreting all of this is that it was a nineteen seventy-four ridge line map that was created as an indicator of where the ridge lines, sorry, my cat, existed. The code is a complement to that map. And the code is what staff would use as applicants come in combined with the map. So I'm referring just to the code, the existing code and the existing map. And they would say, oh, you're, you are in this ridge line scenic corridor map. Let me look at the code and see what you're supposed to do. The code says you're supposed to provide me a graphic of the hundred and fifty by hundred and a hundred feet down, and then lay your building on there, and then look at all of these criteria for subsections. So show me where your cut fills roadway, blah, 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 blah. Where the top of the ridge is, whether your house is, is on there, and then from that perspective, do, are you, are you, are you going to, you're going to planning commission, and are you consistent with the code or not? So the fact that we haven't been applying it is inconsistent with the code. And I see this interpretation as triggering an amendment to the code to decrease it from a hundred to thirty-five feet. And so there are less parcels included. But I agree, so that therefore there's less parcels included, and therefore less parcels that would be considered under this code in future. But I see the practical concerns that we had in when we saw the I don't, I'll call it pink, where it went to a lot of places in the town. And in my mind, to me, that's a simple addition in here that just says either something like you know, when it hits the valley floor, it's not applicable, or something like that. But I don't see a problem with looking at this draft of, you know, back in January that it had all that pink, well, you can't see it, of all of those parcels being included. I, I, I don't see a problem with that, other than, yeah, they have to meet the cut and fill requirements, they have to have the compatible, they have to show us because it is sensitive, our hillsides are sensitive. So that's why I'm just not in support.
But it sounds like what you're talking about is an arbitrary, uh, cutoff at the valley floor. So right here, you see that very, uh, light lavender on the right side of the screen. Uh, and one of those little fingers of the tail is at my house. You know, you could cut it off at that valley floor. Uh, or then you go one shade darker, and you're going through most of downtown Fairfax. Uh, but again, these are arbitrary cutoffs, and, and, uh,
It's a topographic cutoff, so they're not arbitrary, right?
Well, but they're arbitrary in the sense that at what point does that red line of the ridge, the center of the ridge coming down into town, that top, so on the left, that red line with the darkest purple around it, that's the highest elevation, uh, on the other side of the map. Uh, yeah, so that dark purple is the highest elevation. And then, uh, as that red line comes into downtown, it's getting lower and lower. When you get down to the end of that red line, uh, and maybe it's the, the hundred-foot vertical is the sort of second, uh, lightest lavender. When you get down to the, the bottom of the red line that goes right into Fairfax Creek at the, there, uh, the hundred-foot vertical is the lightest color lavender. So literally, uh, if you're using those red lines as the ridge, which is what's in that seventy-four map, then you're hitting those verticals in downtown. And you could say, well, let's cut that red line off a little sooner. So we're not hitting, you know, this second lightest color isn't included in the ridge line ordinance. Maybe that's the way we go, but again, this is somewhat random, and I was trying to be, uh, more, uh, practical in the sense of looking at the thirty-five foot, but I agree that that does take into account all the other considerations.
And I'm guessing, and I'm just gonna say back, so, okay, is there another code section? Well, I guess I'm just saying I value I value looking in more detail. Even as we're starting to come down the ridge, I, I value looking more closely at the cuts in the fills and the drainage, and where, where the height of the structure is relative to some of those ridges, or looking more closely at biology and hydrology. So I don't know whether it's just a value statement, and, and we're kind of saying all of the you know, what we're saying with this conclusion is that all of the ridges don't matter because they're already built on or something. I, I ki- I'm kind of getting lost in the detail of the mapping versus the value of the ridges, which is, I, I'm heavier on one side, maybe.
You, Chair Rodriguez, I, I would simply say that the problem is, is that if you try to use the hundred-foot vertical, this is just one example. We, the, the bottom of this is two hundred-foot vertical elevation, this is three hundred foot. So if you pick that point at three hundred feet, you say, okay, according to our code, it's defined as a hundred feet vertically down. So that's that dark line there. That entirety of this third lightest mog is, is that hundred feet. Now let's look at, according to our current definition in the code, that hundred-foot vertical, how far does that go? We don't have any guidance as to where it cuts off. It simply says a hundred-foot vertical. So we just start following this zone, this hundred-foot vertical zone around, and that's where I was saying, it extends for ten miles off this ridge alone.
But why is that when the definition says that you're running a hundred and fifty feet horizontal off the ridge point? It doesn't say a hundred and fifty feet all the way around. Is that the topographic line at a hundred and fifty feet?
It says whichever is greater. So you can't just pick the one that's smaller and say, well, we're gonna stop it at the hundred and fifty foot.
What's greater? That what's greater? So I'm, I'm saying that he, that red line is where you're running your hundred and fifty horizontal off of, and your vertical is going below that, and so how are we getting way, way out in that line? Because that's the same topographic line? No, it's not compared to the maps that you gave us previously.
They're independent. Where you're mixing.
Then how is that?
The, the hundred and fifty-foot horizontal measures, measures a horizontal distance. It doesn't care about the.
Off the ridge, not running anywhere.
It's, it's simply going out a hundred and fifty-foot horizontally and then dropping a rock, and wherever that rock strikes the ground is where that hundred and fifty-foot horizontal is. But the vertical says, we're gonna start at this point, this high point here at three hundred-foot elevation, and we're gonna drop a hundred feet down. That's the and so that zone, everything that's captured within that zone is within these two dark lines, and that's where you would have to be completely arbitrary to cut that off, unless you simply said the only thing that functions is to say, and this is what Commissioner Newton's staff came up with, was to say that we're gonna cut it off at thirty-five feet until we can sit down and say let's revisit the hundred-foot vertical distance and figure out how to map it, because it, it can't be the entirety of the town.
Thank you.
Michelle, in the definitions section in seventeen oh six oh oh twenty is a definition of ridge line scenic corridors. And in that definition, it talks about, uh, the ridge line scenic corridors are the areas defined as community and or neighborhood separators and visual resources providing community and or neighborhood identity, further defined as the area on either side of the ridge line, and there's a definition of ridge line, within a hundred and fifty feet horizontal distance measured at right angles to the ridge line, or a hundred feet vertically of the major ridge. Major ridge is also defined. And then it says whichever is greater, is a greater area as located on visual resources map number nine. And so
Then you go home to the house and worry, right? Like, I'm gonna worry now.
I'm sorry.
I think that's Linda is unmuted, and she's talking about being worried about something or another.
Let me, um, I'll go, I'll go take care of that. I'll be right back.
So I'm, 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 I'm really, you know, we also are dealing with the language in the definitions section that says, you know, we've gotta, we've gotta use common sense in how we apply these definitions. Right? So there's this weird fuzzy language that says we gotta, you know, apply these definitions in a way that makes common sense, basically.
Thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Swift had a comment?
And then. Well, and I guess, you know, part of that for me goes to the definition of the hundred and feet vertical, because I see that hundred and feet vertical coming off that hundred and fifty-foot horizontal. So if I'm a hundred and fifty-foot out, that's the greater versus if I'm at sixty feet horizontal, but I'm down eighty foot, that eighty-foot vertical is the larger number. I, and that's why I've always had a problem with the idea that the hundred-foot vertical is gonna run further out than a hundred and fifty feet. I don't see that as the definition in here in the code. Um, and the other piece of this is, you know, and, and the code's interesting, that we're looking at what is impacting significant view corridors, and looking at that from gateways or places in town. So I'm concerned with just the thirty-five feet, and I guess a question that I have is if you looked at what we have traditionally looked at with our list of parcels that we have applied this to and have gone through the process of the ridge line development, where you go and you look at it, um, you know, significant view quarters, and you go downtown and you look up to where the potential building is gonna be for the application to see if it is, if it affects those significant view quarters from the places in town. Um, so we have been applying this since it's been in place. I would be curious, once you applied this thirty-five-foot piece of it, what you came up with in parcels. in parcels relative to the traditional parcel list we've been using? If that makes sense?
Yeah, the, the traditional list is, is functionally obsolete. Uh, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but it was over a hundred parcels were added just looking at the nineteen seventy-four uh, ridge line scenic corridor boundary. So as soon as we basically digitized it and, and used it against a, a parcel map, uh, the Marin, the Marin map parcel layer, we added a hundred and something parcels. Um, when you start to add the hundred and fifty foot horizontal and the hundred foot vertical, or in this case, actually, now we know the hundred foot vertical adds two thousand parcels, but the, the thirty-five foot vertical and it will add additional parcels. It will provide additional protection. So we're already past this forty-six year old uh, functionally obsolete list. We're now using, you know, we're, we're now applying the digitized version of the map against digital information about parcel boundaries and we have a list. Um, and so it's an improvement. It adds protection. It adds substantial protection. My guess relative to the list we were using, we've more than doubled the number of parcels that are subject to RSC regulations. And I think that gets back to this idea about are we net increasing or reducing the protections? We are increasing the protections. Um, we're applying it to a lot more parcels. So, uh, and, and, and at some point in time, you know, what's interesting is, is the chair at one point was talking about creating a triangle, combining the vertical and the horizontal, and that's been used in other areas. There are various approaches you can apply. Um, where you would, you would basically make a triangle off the ridge line. This regulation doesn't do it. As Commissioner Newton pointed out, you take one, then you take the other, and then you take, in this case, the third. And you, and you map them independently and then you combine them and you say, well, which one's the most restrictive? Well, whichever one extends out further from the ridge line. And you could see in this, on this diagram that some of it is the thirty-five foot vertical. Some of it's the hundred and fifty foot horizontal and some of it's the traditional. And what I like about it is that it jibes more or less with what historically everybody has accepted as the the ridge lines that are designated and the ridge line quarters that are uh, therefore need to be protected, that it's not a major change from that. So.
And I, and I get, and I guess, um, you know, again, it goes back to that hundred foot vertical because I would say the way that I would look at this is that it does apply the triangle when you do that. But that gets, you know, I, I guess I don't understand how and this goes back to the first meeting we had on this, how we come up with that hundred foot vertical definition going beyond the hundred and fifty foot horizontal. So I think that this was designed to do that triangle piece.
All right. So can we go on to Commissioner Green? Um, so so far, Ben, you, you've got Mimi, yes. Uh, Cindy and I know right now, so.
Well, I haven't, we haven't voted, so.
Well, that, yeah, but he was saying a majority of people willing to accept what we've got tonight, but I think we've got to figure out, really turning to him on whether he's seeing an opportunity for coming, you know, back on given what he's heard. Uh, so Commissioner Green.
You're muted, Phil. Phil.
You're still muted, Phil?
Commissioner Green?
Okay, it's a really interesting problem. And I guess why it's taken a year, um, to get through this. Um, I think that the solution that, and you know, kudos to Mimi for figuring this out. I think the solution that Mimi has is a good, like Ben says, for now, great idea. And we're just gonna have to, I think we should, uh, you know, accept it, adopt it and recommend it, whatever we have to do tonight. Map C, um, and, um, we'll kind of see how it works. And, you know, bearing in mind, we do need to revisit this. I have given up on the language of seventeen oh six oh. I think the better thing to do would be to take a look at, see what other type of ridge line scenic corridor definitions there might be out there. When I, you know, when I first read this thirty-five foot thing, I was also a little chagrined in that, thinking it might, you know, not include as many parcels. But when you realize, because I looked at it also, I'm a topo reader. When I, when you realize what that hundred foot vertical really means and it could be most of the town, that's a real problem. They didn't figure that out when this was written. But the hundred and fifty foot horizontal distance doesn't seem to, I mean, that seems to be the limiting factor that it would not go out two miles. It would not, it would go out a hundred and fifty feet. You don't, you know, like, I, I agree with Chairman Rodriguez on that point is, is the hundred and fifty foot thing kind of limit the reach of you know, the thirty-five or the hundred foot. But there is some precedent in language in the seventeen oh six oh, uh, oh three oh, talking about a building that must not be thirty-five feet from an adjacent, um, from an adjacent, uh,
Ridge line.
Ridge line. So, so this is, this is part of the, you know, it's kind of in there. We really need to rewrite this whole um, oh six oh part, I think, is, is, is just a, it's just has to be rewritten, uh, with the, with the idea that, that, you know, we're protecting these ridge lines. And there's gotta be better ways of doing this. So I, so just to sum up my thoughts, I would go for adopting or recommending this, this last map here on an interim basis and you know, see how it works out with applicants. I guarantee you, we're gonna need to revisit it.
All right. So what is your thoughts about, uh, what's being presented here?
Well, my thought has always been that we needed a practical fix to the overreach of the additional ordinance, the, uh, original ordinance. And that, uh, staff needed a practical solution to be able to identify parcels and their location on the ridge. And this is a tool that allows that to happen in a much more practical and realistic way than the original ordinance and map. And so, uh, a, as a, as a workaround, I think that this uh, could be a very good solution. It, it certainly has helped, uh, in the last, one of the last projects we reviewed. And, and yes, uh, when the general plan is updated, that seems would be the appropriate time to rewrite that ordinance and to update it into something that's uh, more practical and realistic, given the technology of the day, rather than having a list of fifty parcels from fifty years ago that does nothing to help staff figure out where a new development is being built. So I would say.
Going back to you then, um, what, what is your thoughts now that you've heard everybody else's feedback?
My thoughts. I'm sorry, were, were you asking me again?
Uh, no, I thought you stated your, uh, opinion succinctly and the outlier right now is Cindy. I was going back to her about it.
I just add one point, uh, before you go back to, uh, Cindy, which is again, the definition does not suggest we stop at the hundred and fifty foot uh, horizontal distance from the ridge line. The definition says we stop either at the hundred and fifty foot horizontal distance or the hundred foot vertical, whichever is a greater area. So, uh, that's why.
Yes, Commissioner Swift?
So again, I think, you know, how I see the definition of that is, is different. I look at that triangle piece of it. But I think what I would like to see, um, at this point is to go forward with this mapping. But because we're still gonna apply the code as it's written. And as it's written to those properties that come up on the map, but what I would ask that we do is look at this a year from now.
So Ben, um, so I'm hearing a majority of people going forward with, uh, this. I don't really understand how this relates to the definition that Mimi described in that the map now will not necessarily match the whatever is greater. But what do you intend to do? Are you gonna come back next time with an ordinance amendment or you're going to be, what are you doing now with this?
Well, um, as recommended in the report and with the consensus, um, I see from the commissioners, um, thank you. Uh, we will take this map, finalize it in a version that basically, uh, shows a cumulative map with clear, but clear, clearer boundaries than what you see here. I mean, you can identify the boundaries, but we, we can, we might as well just really, um, outline it so that there's no question. Um, we will also, and then from that, we will prepare a list that's accurate as of the county assessor's records of parcels, you know, upon this date. Um, and we'll have that to use very quickly as a, as a, a quick scan uh, for staff. So we, we will start to apply this cumulative map immediately, um, and get this included in, uh, in Marin map. And without speaking for Commissioner Gonzalez, I do recall her saying that, you know, as a design professional, she's always looking for clarity. So.
So you're gonna go ahead and apply it without an amendment to the code and then we're, this is the final item for this to come back then. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, everybody, for all of your time and effort on, on this. It would be good as part of your work plan, maybe to try to throw that request from Commissioner Swift on there if possible to be considered for a future one. And thank you to Commissioner Newton for her effort and working with staff and staff's patience for all the number of meetings. I think we should talk about whether we should take a quick break right now and come back or whether we want to push through. Who wants to take a quick break?
Can I just quickly finish on that item that I do want to see this come back? Let's say in a year. Put it on the calendar. So, um, because I know that's something that you know, we say we're gonna do, but a lot of times that doesn't happen. And I think this is important enough that, um, we should bring it back and just get a review to see how the mapping is working. Thank you.
Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. I think a year, to, to say a year, uh, maybe we should say when we've completed our housing element update, which is a more or less a year. And perhaps after a couple of these come through, just a, a summary report, a brief discussion from our planning director on how that goes with the, the next one that comes up, just as an information item.
I, I need five minutes.
Good, let's go.
Okay, so exciting news. Um, as your commission will see when you're scanning the town councils, uh, and your packet for next week's meeting. Um, there are, there is major movement afoot, uh, that what we're gonna be describing, and I'm digressing from the, uh, the note, the matter immediately hint, but I use this for context. Um, and to stress the importance of the groundwork that the commission subcommittee has already been undertaking. Um, but as, there, there's a joint meeting, um, next Wednesday, the twenty-first. Um, I do not yet have, I probably shouldn't say this publicly, but I am anyway. I don't have a a, a consent, a quorum of the commission committing to the five-thirty time. Um, but insofar as a regular council meeting, I'm very confident that a, a quorum of th- those people will be there. Um, one, one commissioner has said she can definitely make it. One commissioner said she definitely can't. Um, how are we standing in terms of the remainder of your commissioners, just out of curiosity? Five-thirty next Wednesday.
Now. Did you go ahead and ask us already?
A couple of times.
You did, a couple of times.
I'm good.
Okay. Okay.
Good.
Or Phil and Mimi back?
Yeah, Mimi's saying yes.
Mimi's saying yes, but I don't see Phil.
I'm here. I'm good for the twenty-first.
At least you have three of them.
Michelle, were you not, oh, you're, you're not available because you'd be hiking Catalina.
Well, and, and so, um, what's, what's gonna happen is that the town council at their April seventh meeting authorized hiring EMC planning group out of Monterey as the consultant. Uh, we're fortunate, um, other jurisdictions in Marin are having a heck of a time getting consultant, uh, to agree to say yes to work on these things. Um, part of the problem is that the Southern California uh, housing element update is a year ahead. And as you can see from the numbers that we're facing and the San Francisco region is facing, Southern California will not as extreme as still really huge increase. And so it's a, a, a challenging process to the finish. And so firms are tied up. Um, Sacramento area is also a year ahead of us. So anyway, we have EMC. Um, and, uh, they will be doing the bulk of the presentation. Um, staff did write a draft report today. It'll be out tomorrow for your commission to view. Um, it basically describes, uh, an eighteen public meeting. Uh, hopefully five subcommittee meeting, uh, uh, schedule uh, that addresses all of the major milestones, all of the groups that will be involved. Um, let's see, I should have that at my hands reach. Um, how many meetings before the planning commission? I believe it's about a half dozen, uh, including next week's joint meeting with the town council. And critically, what we're gonna be doing, all these groups, including the subcommittee, will be feeding into the commission, who will then be feeding into the town council for major milestones, uh, such as the housing site report and things like that. So you're a critical part of this process. Um, I think in fairness, given that we're dealing with hundreds of housing units, um, it will probably have to be scheduled as a separate meeting. And so we'll come up with the dates. And I think on the draft schedule, well, actually, I don't wanna, we, we used your regular meeting dates, but I think as we look at our, uh, agendas, um, you know, what you're seeing, of course, with a hot housing market is there's just a lot of private parties, homeowners and Fairfax, et cetera, who need to go before your commission and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would just as soon give them a clean slate at one of the planning commission meetings and then take the housing element discussions at another scheduled time. So.
It's a good idea.
Having, having said that, and like I said, next week is gonna be really good because you're gonna see, uh, for example, and this is I, I'm gonna digress in fifty seconds or less, is I've been waiting for years to have an interactive online uh, web survey, uh, tool. And they've got this product, this called Bang the Table, um, that will very effectively, people show timelines, uh, will be allowing them to register their opinions on the whole range of topics. Uh, will let them access all staff materials, um, all meeting recordings. Um, so in other words, it, it will assemble all of the data and provide them with a very open, interactive process in addition to participation in the eighteen public meetings that will occur before your commission, the town council, the affordable housing committee, uh, one before the climate action committee. So I'm actually giving you a brief on this housing update, um, and, and I should probably stop here and just say, you know, stay tuned. Uh, and please participate next week or it'll be a recorded meeting. So I understand if some people are scheduled out. Um, but. But it's going to get very exciting very quickly and you will see that the schedule is full speed ahead right from the get go because one of the factors is we need to reach a, what they call a stable and finite project in order to proceed with the environmental portion of it. An environmental review takes up to six months if, for example, an EIR is required. So we need to get through selecting sites, doing numbers, looking at our policies, programs, et cetera, which is my way of looping back to tonight's discussion, which is much thanks to our hardworking subcommittee. I really appreciate the fastidiousness preparation in showing up for the second meeting. And it's really quite inspiring to see the energy and intelligence and creativity that we're already seeing with the commission members who've been involved. And you can see that in the report. It, we started with the seven goals that were listed as part of the housing element. Of course, the last one is simply efficient report outs. And Linda can chime in at some point about how difficult it takes her literally days to report out to the state Housing and Community Development and do their annual progress report. It is not a user-friendly document. But in any event, on the other six goals, they were divided up among the commissioners and they did the majority of the deep dive, starting with the goal and then looking as you get more and more detailed into the objectives below the goals, the policies below the objectives, and finally, the implementing programs below the policies. And giving their reaction and this covers the commissioners' reactions. And I think what you see is a recognition that even though this was written a mere eight years ago, a lot has happened. And it's not just the state adding all sorts of statutes that sort of run roughshod over local regulations. But really, the ground has shifted, that people are building, I was at the League of California Cities Conference, one of the gentlemen said, I believe they've built 20,000 accessory dwelling units in the state. And I'm not sure the timeline, perhaps one of the other commissioners that participated in that can remember that. But, you know, that's a lot of housing that's really just accessory to existing housing. So there have been seismic shifts. Commissioners noted that any number of policies and programs were no longer relevant, in some cases because it was questionable whether they could ever be implemented in the first place, just by the way they were. It's interesting how sometimes in people's enthusiasm, they assign things to groups who aren't really responsible for that. So, you know, again, the experience and intelligence among the subcommittee was, hey, we need to focus on when we write at this time, we need to be careful who gets assigned responsibility. And where it's something that's planning, you know, if it's not within their scope of influence or actual authority to affect that change or that program, to talk about encouragement and, you know, what the commission and the town can do and which groups. So I thought that was very helpful to see that kind of really pragmatic first look at this and saying, hey, wait a minute, a lot of this stuff, it's just a wish list. So that was good. And at least in the initial rounds, I feel confident that this commission will definitely be looking at things with a view towards the pragmatic application. And other aspects, what you see in the blue was one commissioner's sort of global view of even these goals need to be updated. So let's take a stab at that. So, you know, in the interest of reporting out what everybody was sort of contributing, focusing on goals and the applications, you know, and the policies and programs, staff just threw that in there. And I'll stop here and just let the three subcommittee members who are present tonight report their reflections on that process.
Okay, I'll go ahead and speak. Two things from the town council meeting where BBK did their housing presentation. One, Ben, is that PowerPoint on the town's website? The last time, I mean, I looked a few days ago, I didn't see it on the planning section. So that should be up there. I know it was.
I think we should all get it, shouldn't we? Huh?
Well, it was attached, I believe, to the agenda for the meeting, but it should be, it should be on the planning department pages where people can sign up to get everything. And we said we were going to post everything there. So I would ask that we go back and make sure it's there. So that would trigger people to get the email to say, here's a change. But the other thing in listening to council member comments, some seem to focus on the goal of this process to be low-income housing. And I think, and I've got a A-BAG PowerPoint somewhere that talks about the RENA process. And there's legislative goals for that process, five or six of them. And I think it would be beneficial as a part of a joint meeting, perhaps, to go over what the goals are of the A-BAG RENA process. Because it isn't only providing low-income housing. I think it would, that information would benefit the council and us as well as we go forward on that. And then just commenting on the existing housing element and going through it, it was a good process to make us go through and go back to the beginning of that and kind of make an assessment to see where we are. But perhaps more importantly, to see what has and hasn't changed over the time that we approved that housing element to now. Things like, and I know we, there are a lot of like data collections that we all talked about needing, but when you look at maybe assumptions that were made for that housing element was maybe an assumption that there would be more transportation in town. So when you look at, has that changed? Is it the same as it was 10, 15 years ago? Kind of just getting an assessment of the assumptions that were made that were the basis for some of the decisions made and are they valid assumptions going forward? I mean, as Ben said, there's been a lot of changes during this time period. You could look at it from public safety, you could look at it from, you know, the water issue. And those things just need to be kind of thought of in terms of where we are now versus, you know, even the pandemic and any changes that has made to jobs and transportation, those types of things. So, I mean, it was a good process to go through that and look at those assumptions and kind of give thoughts to where we are right now going forward. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else from that subcommittee? I'm not seeing anyone.
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I was waiting to see if Mimi wanted to say something. I'm one of the people who felt that we should take a really close look at our goals because they were kind of all over the place. Some of them were redundant, some of them, I think, would be better combined into a more cohesive strategy. I agree with Ben, I think there was a lot of fluff of, well, we're, you know, we're going to do this and we're going to work with realtors and find listings of affordable housing and move people into them and have a list of everyone who's, I mean, really unpractical stuff. And I think it was probably an attempt to just try throwing things against the wall to see what sticks, to make it look like we were doing, going to be doing so much more than what was humanly feasible. I think we should be just a whole lot more concise and also into our goals, try to bring in, try to make the goals more reflective of actual policies and accomplishments that we want or the vision of how we want to do things. I don't know, we can talk specifically about goals at some point. I'll leave it at that for now.
Commissioner Newton?
Yeah, I'll just pipe in. For anyone who didn't see the council meeting, I encourage you to go and watch it. And thank you, Ben, for the slides with the RENA numbers in this handout. I want everybody to absorb the fact that on the first slide in our staff report, you know, we were allocated 61 total units, constructed 90, and there's still 20 left. So just wrap your heads around the fact that because we got too many units in the low-income category than we were allocated, we didn't meet our freaking numbers. And I am really excited and energized about the idea of us really taking a hard look at some of the, you know, this kind of weirdness and looking at it without a preconceived idea about how this town is going to resolve the imposition of this system on our planning and how the state is, you know, acting about it. Because, you know, I will just say that my real goal is to see workers in Fairfax be able to afford the rent. The rent is too damn high. And I feel like if we're focused on the low, very low, extremely low area for housing, that, you know, we're doing God's work regardless of what A-BAG wants to tell us. Oh, you know, we allocated 61 housing units for you in this thing. You built 90, but you still owe us 20. All right, I'm off my high horse.
Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. If I can add another comment, I agree with everything Mimi said. And Ben, I'm not sure the extent to which we count the moderate and above moderate. Do these numbers reflect anything that had a building permit at any level of affordability?
Well, the moderate does. I mean, the moderate is considered, you know, 80 to 100% of average household income, which, of course, in Marin is pretty substantial. But it's certainly not market rate. Because as we know, you talk about a market rate unit in Marin and you're into the 2% or 1% range.
But this is above moderate. Does that not include anything that's market rate?
That's market rate. That's, yeah, they use code for certain things. So above moderate is.
And we only had 23, we only had 10 market rate constructed in, what was that, in the last 10 years?
Yeah, where it gets interesting is with ABUs, because ABUs are really the real housing unit drivers in town. But people are not exactly forthcoming about their rent. So we have to try to secure that information indirectly, like we look at Craigslist listings for apartments and things like that. That's where some of that may be hidden. And that's where I'm hoping by the end of this current cycle, at the end of 2022, we'll be closer to meeting those requirements. But yeah, and again, Linda was the one who grounded out with HCD. At, I mean, it was a long, hard process. She could tell you, I believe it's building permits issued is when they start counting them.
Okay, one other question on the dates of these. I see the sixth cycle is 2015 to 2023. Is that the current, are these dates right? And the prior was 2012 to 2022? How is that?
Okay, so the current one is 2015 to 2022. That's the fifth cycle. And the sixth cycle is what we're planning for right now.
It starts at 2015. It goes 2015 to 2023.
She's just commenting on the typo on the slide one.
Is that a typo on the date?
2012 to 2022.
Yeah, that's a typo. I'm sorry.
The 12 is a typo?
The 12 is a typo.
Okay, so that should be what?
15.
15. So there, I believe when these things started out, they were six-year cycles or something, but they're now eight-year cycle. So 15 to 20, 15.
So RENA 5 is 2015 to 22?
Correct.
And RENA 6 is 2015 to 23?
No, 23 to 31. So we have.
All right.
Yeah.
23 to 31. Okay, that's what threw me because I couldn't figure out what the years and numbers were.
Yeah.
23 to 31.
Before your next meeting. So I want to thank everybody who took the time to look at the goals and the work that you're doing on the subcommittee, maybe just a couple of thoughts on what I did not see in the comments on the goals. One was I didn't see any safety comments, so stuff around woo-wee, flood, whatever, fire, whatever you guys want to do, evacuation, that kind of thing. Also, the concept of the green infrastructure and maybe that'll be more roadway-based. But I also, on the goal H5, the ban on natural gas is really called an all-electric ordinance. And what was the other thing I was going to mention? It would be really, oh, the other thing I thought this was missing had to do with this connectivity between public transit and housing overall, because I do think there's a connection. And the fact that we didn't complete those is a real issue. We really do need to be implementing those improvements, whether it's walking, biking, public transit, whatever walkability we need to keep. So maybe transit isn't the right word, but something like that. And finally, I'd love to see RES check just kind of somehow included.
Instead of transit, mobility?
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, mobility is good.
I'm sorry, what were you saying?
Then it'll be broader.
Michelle, I missed that.
The RES check group, you know, the equity group, how, you know, I'm just trying to think about how to include them as early and often as possible into our thinking here in terms of social equity. Are we using the right language? Are we really thinking about the deaths and maybe how does that relate to the allocations we're proposing and eventually? So that was my only comments on that. Does anybody else have any other comments? Phil, go ahead.
Yeah, just, oh, go ahead.
Phil? You'll need to unmute yourself.
I know, they moved the mute button. It's not kind. Anyway, so part of the thing is, you know, we know that the affordable housing process, whatever that means, cannot really encourage and favor people, you know, who already live in the town. But I want to say this, I am 100% with Mimi on that we need to incentivize and get workers in our town to be able to live here, especially here. Because, you know, it's a tough commute from Vallejo, for example, or even sometimes from downtown San Rafael. So I'm all for that. But we, you know, and that's where I would personally center, you know, I would totally work with Mimi on centering the goals on that, on that process. And then the third thought I had was, this is a very impractical thing. In 10 years, we build 10 units or something.
We, in ten years, we build ten units or something. In, 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 how many years are we going to build, you know, four hundred and ninety? Uh, you know, it'll, it would take, I don't know what it would take. It would take. And, and we're not the best commute in town. I think I pointed this out to the, to the other committee I was on.
So maybe prioritizing workforce housing or something along that line. There is.
Prioritizing workforce housing. And that's where I would like to see this kind of go in a big way. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, too, the chair's comments on the report that Ben provided. Um, our scope. Was. To review. The current housing element. So. What you don't see included in there were things that addressed, you know, the safety element and some of these other items. Um, you know, we came up with. A list of data. That we thought we would need as we went through this process. That's not there as well. So there was discussion. Broader than what you see here, but this was. Kind of the focus of the subcommittee was to, was to review the housing, the current housing element.
Thank you.
And to the workforce housing, you know, something that might be a consideration. Um, as we go through this process would be some kind of survey of existing workers. In town to see, um. You know, how they would feel about. Housing here in town versus. You know, coming from where some of them come from outside.
Be like, um, how long have you worked here? Where do you live? Uh, what kind of income do you make? You know, then you can calculate, yeah. Okay, Commissioner Fregoso, did you have something?
Yes, uh, I have, uh. It, you may not be able to answer the question, Ben, but a, a thought in the back of my mind is. Uh, I know we're doing, we're, we're, we will be re-looking at the opportunity sites. And uh. Total potential of available units that could be zoned there. Do we have a sense, for instance? Of how, how many parcels it would take to create the four hundred and ninety units? Is someone doing a, an assessment of? All available land? Are we just going back to? Pretty much the standard opportunity sites we had before and then adding on a few others?
Or is that just a qua, you know, I think that's in the scope of work of the consultant. Can we table that for a working group meeting? Because you'll get to it, right?
In, in one sentence, I would say that we're going to have to get a lot more creative.
Okay.
Ben, um, did you update us enough on that item then? You got enough out and?
Yeah, um, and, and what I would also say is that, uh. One of the great things is that the three commissioners did do the deep dive into the current housing element and I would encourage everybody to. Crack that volume. I have extra copies here. I'd be more than happy to. Uh, run another printout like a markup copy, you know, black and white so that you don't feel guilty about. You know, ruining a color version, but um, that's going to serve as the basis for going forward, so. And I know pretty much all the commissioners have one, but like I said, a markup copy and it's obviously all available online too, so. You know, if you want to save resources that way, but. We're starting there and like I said, next Wednesday, uh, or when you get your packet. Uh, over the weekend and get used to the new normal, right? Um, is, is you will see a pretty fast-paced schedule. And uh, to the chair's comment about racial equity, social justice, there is a meeting specifically scheduled with them, so. Uh, we're aware that they are uh, an important group that needs to be consulted. In fact, we're. Consulting with a number of our Fairfax standing committees, so. Um, I'll be curious to see, you know, obviously, uh, the, the, the group that presented tonight. Um, is that they're going to have a lot to say with green projects and when I met privately. Uh, with Mr. Vernon last week, um, I was discussing with him. You know, that this notion of uh, on one hand, building affordable housing and on the other hand. Uh, making it uh, efficient and just attractive, so um, lots of, lots of things in the mix.
Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to the minutes of January twenty-first through March eighteenth. Um, hopefully folks have had an opportunity uh, to review those. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes?
I don't have changes to January, but I will for March, so I don't know if you want to take them one at a time.
Okay, um, let's, I have changes in both, so let's start with the January uh, change then, please. Go ahead, Commissioner Swift.
Well, I don't have any for January.
Oh, you don't? I apologize.
I do for March.
Oh, okay, I missed that. I'm sorry. Um, okay, so um. Uh, for changes to the January twenty-first draft minutes on page three. Uh, middle of the page Chair Rodriguez, last line, village character through architectural style and color. And then um, on page four, the last bullet Chair Rodriguez, there is consistency among the commissioners. That they want to see change in design and color on this item. And then. Um. Page five, last bullet. She, she wants to see. On the second line, council members, the consultant, the planning director and a community working group. And that was it for that one. Anybody else on January twenty-fifth, twenty-first?
I have one, uh, one change on page four. Um, it says Commissioner Green provided the following comments. I, I'm sure I mentioned historical in there somewhere, but uh. So.
How about, uh, first bullet after the design reviewer, no, it, design review criteria doesn't mention historical.
I know, but I thought I mentioned it myself, so.
So what is your language that you want to add?
Um, because they are historical pattern. They are a historical pattern, that's all. Those are my changes and I wasn't here for the March meeting, so I don't have. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're looking at the minutes of uh, March.
Commissioner Newton has comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed you.
That's okay. I was confused because I wasn't there, but it says I was on the first page. January twenty-one, I was one of the absent commissioners.
Thank you. Um, alright, going on then to the March eighteenth, Commissioner Swift.
Um. Page three, second paragraph down, and these are, it's consistent throughout. Um, the comments I'm going to make. So where it has the vote, it says, um, the eyes all and we should really. List the commissioner names, so for that it would be Gonzalez, Harper, Newton, Swift and Chair Rodriguez. Um. Same thing on page, page four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that vote at the top. And page. Eight. Um, at the bottom. For the minutes.
Yes.
Uh, the same thing.
Yes. You know, the, the one thing that, uh. The one change that I had was on page seven, Chair Rodriguez, last line. It's uh, an analysis of residential zoning versus the side of things. Alright, um, so do we, is there any others? I don't see any others. How about any, any report from the planning director?
Wait a minute, um, Michelle, I missed your last one on page seven. Where was it?
Linda's here.
Yes, I am here.
Don't we need a motion?
No, no, I, I missed, I missed the change on page seven.
Uh-huh, of page seven, item four, analysis of the residential zoning, like. I wanted to know what zoning.
Page seven.
You mean bullet four?
Oh, right, bullet four.
Bullet four under which?
Oh, bullet five, I'm sorry.
She's right, bullet five, Chair Rodriguez provided the following comments. She would like to continue this item and ask staff to come back. To the following, number four, analysis of residential zoning.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. And yes, you're correct. We need to make a motion on these minutes, please.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as corrected for. The January and March meeting.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second on that? Please.
I think, uh, I will second as to the March meeting if Phil can second as to the. Second as to the January meeting, fine.
Oh, Lord.
I, I have to abstain from the March meeting, but I can vote on the January meeting if we take them separately.
Let's take them separately. Let's just begin with the uh, Janu- uh, whoa, you guys, at what time? Ten thirty and you're doing this to me? Okay, let's do the January twenty-fourth. Who is my second, please?
We're doing it for the public. We're not doing it to you.
I know, but who? Did the second on the January twenty-fourth with the changes amended. Uh, we still have our motion from Sydney. Cindy, please, uh, staff, take a vote.
Okay, uh, I forget who wasn't there. For, just say you weren't there when I call your name. Fregoso?
Was missing, uh, yes.
Green?
Yes.
Newton?
Abstain.
Okay. Swift?
Yes.
And Chair Rodriguez?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes and now we're uh, moving on the March eighteenth minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Please take a vote.
Okay. Alright, um, Fregoso?
I abstained. I was not there.
Okay, thanks. Abstain. Okay, Green?
Abstain.
Newton?
Hi.
Swift?
Hi.
Chair Rodriguez? Uh, we can't hear you, Michelle.
You're muted.
Uh, do we have enough votes for that, Ben? We only had three.
I don't think you do.
So I think that item has to come back.
So we'll continue the March minutes, okay.
Yeah, return with the March minutes. And why did we have the two abstains?
Because they were.
They're absent.
Now theoretically, they could vote on, on, you don't have to be at the meeting, you just have to. Review the minutes and probably the video.
Yeah, they don't have to, but okay, so let's, we'll have to bring it back then. Alright, so any uh, comment from planning director report? Any items continued to the town council or any new uh? Money that you've got for us? Any updates on odds or? The new, the new uh?
Well, I'll start with your last, your last comment, which is. I am, I, I can't guarantee it's going to occur, but I'm aiming to bring odds to the commission unfortunately at a special meeting. On May twenty-seventh, so I would very, I'll send out an email. I think I've already have, but I'll send out another one, uh, if, if I already have and I, I will send one out.
Not yet done that.
Okay, I apologize then. Um, for May twenty-seventh, um, we'll look at the draft toolkit. They, they use a lot of nomenclature that's a very. Uh, interesting and so their, their, their word for a, a. An objective design and development standards-based zoning ordinance is a toolkit. And I guess it's a draft. In any event, um, it's time to get that before the commission and start getting your feedback. We've had. Two uh, subcommittee meetings such as they were, there were subcommittee members. Uh, missing at both of them, but nonetheless, progress was made. Um, and uh, staff is working on making that, it's three hundred and sixty pages right now, which is pretty clunky. So, um, I'm working on getting that draft into a format that's a little bit more. Um, easily usable uh, for all people, um, and that would be the starting point. Um, so that's that.
Ben, just make sure you've got a quorum, okay, before you schedule that?
Yes, absolutely, which is, you know, it's challenging getting feedback from your commission sometimes. Um, some people do respond quickly and some. Uh, very slowly, so I would, it, it's a huge boon to staff for scheduling purposes because. Believe it or not, the consultants are super busy too, so.
Folks then in attendance this evening, do you have a schedule available for March the twenty-seventh?
Okay.
I'd have to look at my calendar, so.
You don't have that with you?
No.
You mean May twenty-seventh?
May twenty-seventh, Norma?
I'm, I'm good.
Good. Mimi? Or Phil?
I won't know till about a week before.
Right. I've got a thumbs up from Mimi, so you've got a couple of people going. Okay, anything else, Ben?
Um, just that there was uh, some good information presented. At the uh, uh, League of California Cities Conference. It was virtual. Um, we did have two commissioners, uh, uh, Chair Rodriguez and, and Member Swift. Um, who both attended and we all tuned into certain uh, sessions, um, which are available online. I, I, you know, there's some aspects of virtual meetings that are really helpful and I think one of them is the assumption that. People are busy and they might have to loop back on certain things. Um, but I thought that the League of California Cities Regional Housing. Uh, Needs Assessment Seminar, which was entitled, You've Got Your Rena Now What, was uh, pretty useful. Um, they had two people from Housing and Community Development, uh, Soha Mahmood. Uh, who's been very helpful in personal communication with her in the past and Paul McDougall, who is the. Uh, head of policy, I believe, the policy director, kind of a heavy hitter in that. And they went through various strategies to using different sites and how to be creative. I don't want to, uh, and I sent something out to. Uh, commi- I, have I sent that out to the commission yet? I know I've been looking at the draft. Um, if I haven't, I'll, I'll confirm that and send it out, but. It basically points out, and this was brought up by BBK, that. Uh, the state is really geared up uh, to insist on. At least a good faith effort to complying with the Rena numbers. And that, a point that Mr. McDougall emphasized was that there can be fines of up to a hundred thousand dollars a month. And that uh, the state can appoint a receiver to review all housing-related development. Projects. And we've all heard of those horror stories of receivership, so that's something to keep in mind. That, you know, i- it's. If, if somebody's there emphasizing that's the consequence and we know the laws, I mean, that BB, BBK presentation. Lists all the ways, so it's just something to keep in mind. Um, as we go forward, but there was some other uh, uh, pretty good information and I will turn it over to Commissioner Swift. I don't really have much else to add except that, as always. Uh, the earlier commissioners can read their packets, ideally the weekend that you get them. Um, certainly not day of meeting comments because what happens is we're inevitably scrambling with a bunch of things. So it makes it really difficult to turn that around, very stressful, so we do appreciate earlier comments. And if the commissioners want to. Well, that, that'll be beyond my scope about the League of California Cities Conference and what their takeaways were.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? So going on to commissioner comments and requests. Commissioner Swift?
Um. A question for. Director Berto, have we submitted our annual housing element report yet to the state?
Yeah.
So can, I would like a copy of that. I don't know if the rest.
Did it go out? I thought for some reason we got a copy. Wow.
Can you check? I don't believe I saw one, but could you please check on that and if it hasn't gone out?
Yes, uh, I, I'm trying to deliver this stuff, but um, like Chair Rodriguez said, I thought I listed what the state had provided, but I will double. Yes, I'm trying to deliver this stuff, but like Chair Rodriguez said, I thought I listed what the state had provided, but I will double check that. I mean, what we provided to the state, what happens, we gave them the numbers and they actually gave us something back that's intelligent, which is the challenge, because our spreadsheet, you wouldn't want to try to read that.
Actually, I would. I would like that. And then, you know.
We'll send it to you.
Then just to comment on the voting on our minutes, it might be useful to come back and address if people abstain, whether you can still vote. Because it's as if they aren't here, so then you're left with the three people or whatever that vote, and then they could possibly do that. So that might be something to check to come back, so that.
Yeah, I know it's a practical matter. Yeah, generally, if you're not there, it's a good idea.
Right. And then the third thing is, and I had it on my calendar, and I figured there must have been a reason for it. It was a year ago when the application for School Street Plaza came before us. And it must have been on my calendar because we had said we would look at that or wanted to review that a year after that, so we can kind of assess, you know, where that is, how that worked as a live work and whether all the construction was done. So either doing that as a part of our housing element process, but I would like to get a report back on School Street Plaza to see, you know, how they have moved forward and what's done and what's not done and how that is all working. That's all I had.
Okay, we'll confirm what we promised your commission, but I think a quick report of what the status of that is is easily doable at a future meeting. Linda, are you listening?
I walk by it every day. I could tell you what's happening.
Well, I mean, I just briefly, they've gotten permits, they're doing a lot of work. Some of the places that were harboring homeless people over on the ballpark side have been filled in. We're very happy with the fact that, you know, a lot of stuff that was bootlegged has now been legalized. And so that the units are basically occupied and legal. There's a couple little wrinkles, and I don't want to, you know, spend a lot of time going into that tonight, but overall, I would characterize that as a success. It's certainly eons safer than it was when they were having the fires.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody, for your time and attention for this evening's meeting. With your approval, we will adjourn at 10:30 6 p.m., and I hope everybody has a good weekend.
The commissioners, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez.